Public hearing.
Um.
Public hearing is to discuss.
Excuse me.
The purpose of the night's public hearing is to discuss community block grant. Neighborhood revitalization revitalization program. I'll turn the floor over to Mr. Austin.
Good, good evening, commissioners. Tiffany and and I have been working on uh community block development grant opportunity along with partners at Southwestern Commission. They have a grant that is coming due here at the end of October that we believe we can apply for to help with infrastructure costs associated with Western Western Village. Part of that process is we have to hold a series of public hearings, so this would be the first of the public hearing. And what they really ask us to do is just go over some of the basics of the of the program, what's designed to do, what the grant is 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 available for. And then as we will talk a little bit more in the regular session as we set the next public hearing about the application and where we go from here. But um just a with that, the Community Block Development Grant for Neighborhood Revitalizations offers Oregon counties like ours the opportunity to to meet housing and community development needs specific and most critical to their locality. The this year, North Carolina received forty-four mil- a little more than almost forty-five million dollars in CDBG funds in the two thousand and twenty-four allotment, and they've earmarked approximately twenty-eight twelve million dollars for this neighborhood revitalization program. And it's made available through through grants to what they call non- non-entitled governments, which is what we are, we're a non-entitled community. They the I the program is designed to support the through the three livability principles that guide sustainability and resiliency throughout the areas that receive the funding. So they want to promote equitable, affordable housing, support existing communities, and value community value communities and neighborhoods. The national objectives that they have to fall in line with come from the federal government, which is they have to these projects have to help low and moderate income areas, neighborhoods, or new projects. The difference this year or with this grant cycle is that the state has received a Helene waiver grant for all counties that are part of the Helene disaster declaration, which will allow us for the first time to explore or to apply for new construction, which previously this grant has been used to revitalize neighborhoods. So scattered site infill development and redevelopment has been its main focus. This year, because we're in the Helene disaster death declaration, Jackson County can actually apply for funding for new construction, and they'll allow us to apply for funds up to five million dollars. So that's that's where we intend to talk to you later on in the meeting about that five million dollar request and how that happens and the things that we need to do as a as a community and the requests that we'll make of the Board of Commissioners to support that application at their at the next meeting in October. So that's the that's the basics of the program and and the grant. I'll be happy to answer any questions that that you guys may have.
Questions on the board? No questions or no further business in the public hearing. I'll seek a motion for adjournment.
A word.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? We'll go ahead and call our six-thirty meeting. Wait, we gotta wait a minute. First up tonight, we have a couple of proclamations. The first being Fire Prevention Week, whereas whereas Jackson County is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living and visiting our community, and whereas the fire whereas fire remains a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and the presence of lithium ion batteries in many household devices introduces unique fire risks, and whereas most of the electronics used in homes daily, including smartphones, tablets, laptops, power tools, e-box, e-scooters, and toys, are powered by lithium ion batteries, which if misused, damaged, or improperly charged, can overheat, start a fire, or explode. And whereas the National Fire Protection Association, the NFPA, reports an increase in battery-related fires, underscoring the need for public education on the safe use of lithium ion batteries, and whereas residents should follow three key calls to action, but only listed product by only listed products, charge batteries safely, and recycle them responsibly to prevent battery-related fires. And whereas lithium ion batteries store a large amount of energy in a small space and improper use such as overcharging, using off-brand chargers without safety certification, or exposing batteries to damage can result in fire or explosion. And whereas the proper disposal and recycling of lithium ion batteries help prevent environmental hazards and reduce fire risks in home and community. And whereas Jackson County first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of fires through prevention, safety education, and community outreach. And whereas twenty-two-five Fire Prevention Week theme, Charge Into Fire Safety, Lithium Ion Batteries In Your Home, serves to remind us of the importance of using, charging, and recycling lithium ion batteries safely to reduce the risk of fires in homes and communities. Now, therefore, the Jackson County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims October fifth through eleventh is Fire Prevention Week throughout Jackson County. Is there a motion to approve this proclamation?
So move.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Tonight, we have Michael Forbes from Emergency Management here to accept this proclamation.
Yeah, somebody else.
Yeah, I realized Mike was not here now.
So just to give you all kind of a rundown on fire prevention is we started last week. We had hit four schools last week. We're we've already hit two this week. I got two left to go, but we spent all day in those schools. We start out in the morning with assembly, and then we go and they get to go outside and see all the people we've got, ask questions. And then that afternoon, after we've served lunch to the kids, we go into the classrooms and do a lesson for them. And just so happens, I'm in the fourth grade, and it's a history lesson, so they're they're getting a history lesson on firefighting and how fire prevention come about. It takes the whole county. Here in Jackson County, we're doing something that no other county does across the state, and that is we use our whole county. So emergency management kind of heads this up along with our Fire Prevention Board, our Fire and Safety Group. And then we talk about the agencies that are involved, looking at the Rescue Squad, the Fire Departments, the Sheriff's Department, US Force Service, the North Carolina Police Service, and Harris CMS. We all come together. During the day, we had fifty-eight people today in Culloway Valley that showed up to get this done. You know, when you're looking at doing around five hundred kids in a day's time, it takes a lot to get them, but definitely this county is something I'm proud to be in for this reason. But thank you all for this.
Thank you.
Our second proclamation tonight is the Domestic Violence Awareness Month proclamation, where it's Domestic Violence Awareness Month is intended to draw attention to the fact that domestic violence is widespread and has public health implications for every community member of Jackson County. And whereas Jackson County joins the state of North Carolina in recognizing October twenty-fifth as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, consistent with the Governor's statewide proclamation. And whereas domestic violence includes a spectrum of abusive behaviors, physical, emotional, psychological, financial, sexual, and digital, that affect people of every age, identity, background, and neighborhood, and the consequences reverberate through families, schools, workplaces, faith communities, and the broader economy. And whereas Jackson County is committed to educating our community about preventing domestic violence, promoting healthy relationships, and supporting survivors with trauma-informed services and pathways to safety. And whereas with leadership, dedication, and encouragement, there is compelling evidence that we can reduce domestic violence in Jackson County through prevention, education, increased awareness, accessible services, and holding people who commit acts of violence responsible for their actions. And whereas Jackson County strongly supports the efforts of national, state, and local partners, including the Center for Domestic Peace, to in to engage residents in prevention, to connect survivors with help, and to strengthen accountability across all systems. And now, therefore, the Jackson County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims October twenty-two-five as Domestic Violence Awareness Month throughout this county, and urges all people of Jackson County to learn more about domestic violence, to support survivors and their families, and to commit themselves to the community goal that everyone in Jackson County can live free from violence. Is there a motion to approve this proclamation?
So move, Mr. Chair.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
None opposed? Tonight, we have from the domestic violence or I'm sorry, Center for Domestic Peace, Tom Brooks.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks.
Thank you for this proclamation, and I just want to take a moment while I'm here to also thank you for the shelter that is under construction that I know several of you were at the groundbreaking for that a few years ago. It's getting closer to completion, and it's a much-needed resource here in Jackson County. I can tell you, it's it's really going to benefit some of our friends and neighbors who currently are having to seek shelter in other locations or hotels, putting them up in. And it's desperately needed and greatly appreciated. So thank you again for your support on behalf of our board and for that shelter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks.
Mm-hmm.
Next up tonight, we have approval of the agenda. If there are no need if there's no need to make any amendments, I'll seek a motion for approval.
So move.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Next, we have approval of the minutes. We have our public hearing for the transit grants and our regularly scheduled meeting from September sixteenth. If everyone's had a chance to review those, I'll seek a motion for approval of both.
So move.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Moving on now to Chairman Report. This week, I don't have much to report. We do have a couple of things going on around the county. Up in Cassiers this weekend, we have our leaf festival. It's Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. So if you've got free weekend and want to see some pretty leaves, come on up. Also, down in Whittier, I know Dick Darnell is or I'm sorry, Darnell Farms is, I've seen on Facebook where they're crushing up sorghum and getting their fall stuff out, so a lot of opportunities to get out and enjoy a beautiful weekend. Any other commissioners have anything to report this week?
No, sir.
Okay. County Manager King, his report.
So a lot of our projects are getting ready to go out for bid, and I just wanted to kind of reiterate kind of the process. Currently, on October fifteenth, on the major projects, which is school projects, admin building, detention, we're doing pre-qualified bidder process. So they're going to be sitting around in the paper and on our website, and on their website, they're going to be asking for a bidder that that are won't be pre-qualified to put in bids. So that'll be happening on October fifteenth, and that meeting will be in this room most of the day that day. So if you know of any companies in the local area that would like to participate in any of those projects, if they could just reach out to Manoy to get it kind of on the schedule, and then they can come to that meeting and and kind of work through that process. So or if you have ones you just want to send to me, I'll I'll send it up to the platter too. So we just want to make sure everybody's included.
That'd be put on the state website.
Uh, I think I'm not sure the the actual procurement process with C Mar, but I'm assuming that they're going out through different, I'm going to say they're different magazines, like construction magazines that are published in. So there's definitely going to be out there in the public. I'm not sure about the state works out from that standpoint, but I definitely we're trying to reach as many people as we can.
I didn't know what the requirements were using the C Mar, if it had to go through them.
No. Done. The other project that that we're running locally is the Fairground Project, and did want to bring you up speed a little bit on that. So we've got bids going out in middle of November, and there'll be probably a three to four week process with the collecting those back in and then working on the mechanical heating and air, I'm sorry, heating and air, electrical and plumbing. So those will be the trades that are going out the first quarter of twenty-six. And we also did get through the Economic Development Department, Tiffany, they wrote a grant for the tobacco stuff. We were awarded five hundred thousand dollars for the Nevevean project, so that was a big win this week. I just wanted to let you know about that. And the transit piece, so right now, we're scheduled for December as a completion date. We are working with them on several issues. There's some modification that has to be done. We did file the application with the state to increase the traffic flow on Plum Streets. We've got the engineering for that done. Now we're trying to tie that back into the science, and that'll be working kind of in tandem with the main contractor to finish up. But that's.
Plum Street.
Where's that?
Behind Cookout.
Oh.
It's a street right before, like if you're going towards western, it's right before Cookout.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And that's all I have. Do you have any questions?
It was named Plum Street.
Yeah.
Yeah, keep up the good news, you know. Bring us some good news.
All right. First up tonight, we have Deborah Jeffries. Ms. Jeffries.
I wanted to thank you briefly for both of those proclamations. Both of those are worthy causes, and it's really good to see Commissioner's support for both of those. That's your need rate. And I did bring you some good news. I wanted to tell you about something exciting that happened recently. So the Jackson County Public Libraries, which includes the Jackson County Public Library here in Silva, and the Alpert Carlton Cassiers Community Library, were the organization recipients of the twenty-twenty-five Mountain Heritage Award. Those libraries are recognized for their commitment to preserving and promoting Southern Appalachian culture. So in case you're not familiar with this award, Western's Mountain Heritage Award is given in recognition of outstanding contributions to the preservation or interpretation of the history and culture of Southern Appalachian, or in recognition of outstanding contributions to research in or interpretation of Southern Appalachian issues. And award winners are chosen by a special committee of regional and campus representatives. So this is awarded each year at Mountain Heritage Day, both in an individual and an organization. So the award this year noticed that these libraries serve as a repository for regional literature and cultural materials and support community education and engagement. They provide full-time and seasonal residents with weekly programming events, local history, and genealogical resources. So it's lovely to see our libraries, both of them, recognized for the work they do. And I want to point out to you that they achieved all of this as part of Montana Regional Library System, so with all the benefits membership in that system provides. So why break something that isn't broken, especially when it's likely to cost the taxpayers more money? And why take the risk of damaging such a vital, important, and successful institution? So I have two requests, one of which is please join me in congratulating the libraries, both of them, with an honor. It's really nice to see that they were given this. And second, please, again, reconsider your decision to leave the Fontana Regional Library System. It's going to break more than it accomplishes. All right. Thank you.
Ms. Jeffrey. And yes, very much congratulations to both libraries for the Mountain Heritage Award. Next, we have Betsy Hamlet.
My name is Betsy Hamlet, and I live here in Jackson County. I'm a retired ITU professional who focused on moving and consolidating data centers and also disaster recovery planning. We're now a year out from Helene. Fortunately, we were spared the drastic destruction of a neighboring county's head, but our county communications infrastructure didn't fare nearly as well. We had no phones, no internet, no cell service, or at least we probably more in outlawing areas. Our bank records didn't work either. Our library was really one of our only links to the outside world during that time. Between September twenty-ninth and October first of last year, library Wi-Fi had over fifteen thousand hits. During that same time, two thousand three hundred and thirty-seven people came into the library to use the computers, and that didn't include all the hundreds of them that were sitting outside using Wi-Fi. So I have some questions for you and Mr. King. Do you and both of you have a disaster recovery plan for the county ITU infrastructure? If you don't, please make one and make it now, not when you've got a storm a- rolling down on you. Are you prepared to take on the responsibility for the library as well? Can the county's ITU structure infrastructure support both the higher daily bandwidth from the library? And then on top of that, the higher load that you would get during a disaster like Helene? If not, what's it going to cost us to upgrade? And last but not least, can your county ITU staff support the extra load? And if so, if not, how many more people are you going to have to hire? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Deborah Smith.
Good evening, ma'am. I'm the trustee for the Fontana Regional Library Board. On September the ninth of twenty-twenty-five, we voted on a press release and distributed it to all of the local newspapers in the region. To my knowledge, most of them have not published this release, so I wanted to share it with you this evening. The Fontana Regional Library is proud to serve public libraries in Jackson, Macon, and Swain Counties. In response to questions from the public about Jackson County's decision to withdraw from the FRL to establish its own county library system, the FRL Board of Trustees issues the following statement. Jackson County has stated that they have no plans to close any Jackson County library. Jackson County libraries would continue to operate as an independent county system if Jackson County leaves the FRL. The FRL has no plans to close any FRL libraries. There are no official plans or discussions about removing any library services, including North Carolina Cardinal, from any FRL library. If Jackson County separates from the FRL to establish its own county library system, its libraries would be able to access North Carolina Cardinal and other library services in the same way as other independent county library systems in North Carolina. and other library services in the same way as other independent county library systems in North Carolina. This year, the board of commissioners of Jackson, Macon and Swain Counties have each increased library funding compared to last year. And I believe Jackson County was one point five million dollars. No library materials have been removed from any F R L library due to objectionable content. The F R L will continue to serve Macon County and Swain County libraries if Jackson County leaves the F R L to establish its own county library system. The F R L Board of Trustees and all library staff remain committed to providing excellent library services. Thank you.
Next we have Rebecca Herbers. Ms. Herbers.
Hello, um, Michael, John, Commissioner, Chairperson Mark, Todd and Jenny Lynn. Um, I'm from a nonprofit background and I had the opportunity to make a couple of presentations before, um, retirement to the Board of Commissioners. It has always been, um, a, a great opportunity. Not that they funded what I was asking for, but they all smiled and were so supportive and, um, and most importantly, encouraging and listening. So, um, I'm here to say that unfortunately, cause I know you guys are just human beings that are working hard, your credibility is minor to you though. So because you didn't listen to the majority of the community. So I'm just asking you to consider sending you the vote. We want to stay with the F R L. And, and I was glad to see about the, um, fire commissioner, the fire report, because I went to one of their presentations. But it's the first time when it, when Kevin took the pictures, first time I saw y'all come. So just remember that we're all community and when we talk to you, we don't want that glazed over look and we just wanna be listened to. So thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next we have Sarah Hissy. I'm sorry if I messed up. Sarah.
Good evening, how are you guys doing? So my name is Sarah Hissy and I'm here on behalf of Circles of Jackson County. I'm a student social work intern. And we are gonna have a poverty simulation that is gonna be on November fifteenth. Um, it's gonna be from nine A M. to one P M. And basically, um, we're partnered with, um, Circles of Jackson as well as Circles of Cashers in Glenville with the Parks and Recreation Department, um, in Western Carolina. And it's basically going to, um, simulate people who are living in poverty. In Jackson County, nineteen point three percent of our, um, community members live in poverty as well as, so that roughly translates to one in five members. And so in participation of the, of the poverty simulation, um, you are basically getting a deeper understanding of what your citizens in the marginalized communities are experiencing. And I have a flyer. I'm allowed to leave it with you. And we did send out personal emails as well. So I wanna thank you guys for your time and I appreciate.
Real quick, um, you said nine to one on November fifteenth.
And that's a Saturday, yes.
Saturday.
Mm-hmm.
Where is it located at?
It's gonna be at Western Carolina University at A K Heinz Center.
So much.
Thank you. Are there any more questions? No? All right, thank you.
Uh, Bill Gross.
Good evening. Thank you and for the opportunity. My name is Bill Gross. I've lived in, uh, Colley for the last forty-five years and, uh, always, um, tell them it's, it's a place where God spends his vacations. I was appointed by a commissioner years ago, uh, Jackson County Commissioner to talk about and the new pool committee for Colley. This year, finally, it's open and it's a beautiful pool. However, when I went to swim, uh, at the lap pool, before I went to swim, I was told by the lifeguard, it's cold. And indeed it was seventy-nine, seventy-nine degrees. The other pool for the children were eighty-five degrees. I swim lap pools for physical exercise. At eighty-eight years old, you gotta keep moving. So that's what I'm trying to do along with other elderly people in Jackson County. But I've used a community pools for years in the area. Franklin, eighty-five to eighty-six degrees. Uh, Cherokee, eighty-five to eighty-six degrees. It's closed, by the way, uh, for maintenance. Uh, eighty-three to eighty-four for Wayne'sville, eighty-three to eighty-five degrees in Hendersonville. Every place temperature is ninety-eight point six. Seventy-nine degrees is cold. So I was told that the high school and those college swimmers like to have it colder. But seventy-nine degrees is too cold for a community pool for general population. The majority of the taxes are paid for by older and seniors of Jackson County. Veterans, uh, for rehab and all that, uh, made it to be better. So I asked for the commissioner to consider changing the current temperature of seventy-nine degrees in the lap pool to eighty-five degrees. This would better serve all people who are paying the taxes for the pool. We waited a long time to enjoy our pool. Swimming is the best exercise to keep healthy. Thank you.
First, thank you.
Thank you. And John, John, uh, John Glenn's behind me.
We are. Uh, John Glenn? We can, we can hear it from here.
Yeah. I got a thing now. I'm, uh, John Glenn, I came from Gastonia, I've been about twenty-two years ago. And I went to prep school in Chattanooga, Tennessee, was a boarding student for five years. During that period of time, I, uh, was on the swimming team, among other things. But I, I love athletics. And, uh, while I was doing that, we competed against all the private schools and some of the public schools there in the state of Tennessee and, uh, that area. I, uh, swam the God-awful race on earth. And that's the, uh, the butterfly, but I was a competitive diver. And so that, that worked out real well, cause I, I could dive and, you know, pick up the slack on that. One of the things I will tell you, he mentioned it earlier, there's no point in going out here and freezing your donkey off in a swimming pool and thinking that's, oh, that's great. That's not great. First of all, it makes you not wanna get to the pool. Second of all, it's, it's, it's hard on you physically. And the idea behind swimming, as it is in physical therapy and other areas, is to get your body working and working in conjunction with environment so that you can, you can grow in the water. You can, and it's an excellent way to do it. That's my comment. I encourage you here in Silva, Jackson County, to encourage your people to get the temperature up so that your young men and women can enjoy it with the pool, number one. And older people like me, yes, too, right? Anyway, the idea behind it is to let the people here in the county have a place where they can grow and can exercise sensibly and not hurt themselves. And this is a good way. Raising that temperature up to eighty-five degrees makes a whole lot of sense. Now, those of you who are skeptical about it, I would encourage you to come out. And I will personally, I have a swimming pool at my house and I have, I have a wonderful idea. And if you don't believe in eighty-five degrees, come on out and tell me about pool. You'll believe it. Be real simple. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, I've got the, my, uh, the phone numbers so you can verify those degrees and Franklin and Wayne'sville and so forth. Can I give it to you?
Yeah, yeah, we'll take it and we'll get with Parks and Rec and see what we can do.
Thank you for hearing us.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next we have Jack Summers.
Hello, my name is Jack Summers and I've lived in Jackson County since two thousand and three. And while I've lived here for twenty-two years, my roots in Appalachia go deeper as my father-in-law was a West Virginia coal miner. Uh, since being elected, my, my, my observation is that this commission has chosen to pursue culture war issues, first by removing the plaques from the Silva Stam statue and then by voting to leave the library system. I urge you to consider how your words and actions affect the political temperature of this county. We have recently seen an increase in politically motivated violence in the country. And while there have been high-profile events in places like Utah and Minnesota, I have a story to tell from Jackson County. I moved to Jackson County from Baltimore, Maryland, where I had a friend who ran for office on the Green Party ticket. I got a T-shirt out of that. On the front it said Rick Cunkel and on the back it said, Green Party, not for sale. One day I made the mistake of wearing it to buy groceries at the Ingalls in Main Street, Silt. While I was shopping, I noticed a young man staring at me. His body suggested that he was agitated. As I continued shopping, I repeatedly noticed this same person staring at me. When I finished, I went to the self-checkout aisle and began checking my groceries. The guy and his girlfriend were not far behind and they began checking out at the register across the aisle. When I finished, I looked up and this guy was standing in front of my cart pretending to read his receipt. I say pretending because his girlfriend was still checking groceries. Since it turned the lock on my exit, it appeared to me that violence was likely and imminent. The guy was solidly built and a good twenty or thirty years younger than I. With the idea that I needed to be ready to defend myself, I pawned the utility knife that was in my pocket and hit it against the handle of the shopping cart. I then looked up and said, excuse me, with clear voice. At this, he squared up and looked like he was about to engage when his girlfriend, behind me, called out his name. She said, Bill. Well, I don't recall actually what the guy's name was, but I do remember her tone. Her tone made it clear that first of all, she had seen what was going on and secondly, that she knew what he was up to. And thirdly, that if he started a fight, there would be serious consequences on his domestic life. At this point, the young man reevaluated his position and he moved out of my way. I left the store wondering where the hell I had just moved to. While that event ended peacefully enough, it could have easily gone the other way. If I had killed him, it would be something that I would have to carry the rest of my life. In my opinion, responsibility also extends to those who told him that liberal is his enemy. Please ask yourself whether you're doing things worthwhile, you're building things that are worthwhile or just trying to burn down the things that were entrusted to you. That young man in Ingalls that day could have been your son or your brother or a member of your church. Dividing and constituting constituents along partisan lines does not promote the welfare of this county. I urge you to reconsider.
Thank you all for informal comments. We appreciate that today. Moving on now to our new business and first up is Register, Register of Deeds refund, uh, and Mr. King.
So we use a, a request for a correct overpaid revenue from the Register of Needs Office. They mischarged, um, should have been four hundred and ninety-eight dollars, it was seven hundred and fifty. So they refunded the due of two hundred and fifty-two dollars and has to be released by the Board of Commissioners. So I'm asking my District of Deeds to do that.
Is there much to approve that refund? And a second? All in favor? None opposed? Moving on now to the holiday schedule.
Uh, second item is the, uh, two thousand and twenty-six holiday schedule. And we're just, it's the same schedule as we had this year. It's for next, um, calendar year, twenty twenty-six. And I recommend that as well.
These were our holiday schedules. Is there much to approve that? And a second? All in favor? None opposed? Moving on now to our player, Planning Area Map Amendment Request, uh, to set a public hearing for November fourth at six twenty-five. Mr. Poston?
Good evening again. Looking to be, yeah, so, um, planning staff's been working with, uh, a member of the Rogers family who, uh, uh, is in the Colley area and, um, had questions, um, initially when we adopted the Colley zoned area. Others indications that the Rogers property, which is what you see here highlighted, uh, here and here, well, was, um, uh, not included into the district. And, um, and based in research that we've been able to uncover from ten years ago, um, and then talking with folks that were, uh, in and around that, it appears that that park was not accomplished, uh, with this piece. But the small one being a pen number here and the small cutout here, which is also owned by the heirs, uh, was, was left in, which we believe was inadvertent. So that's not anything that staff can do by themselves. I can't go in there and legally remove that. This was a map that was adopted. And so, uh, a request would be for the Board of Commissioners to call for a public hearing to make this consideration. Uh, there was a public hearing, uh, held at the Colley Planning Council level and Planning Board also, uh, reviewed this. Um, we did have some comments and some concerns about what that would mean to remove those properties. But at the, uh, end of the, uh, both meetings, uh, both boards recommended the Board, the Commissioners consider the request. Uh, I'll certainly be happy to answer any questions. But the request before you today would be to call for a public hearing on November fourth at six twenty-five to consider.
Which properties are you requesting to remove?
It, it's right here. These two that are, it's, it's all pen number, uh, but this property. Yeah, this one right here is the other one that was left in and the smaller one. Those would be the properties that were left in the district. It's all, this is all the deed and pen number, but this one was left out. So, you know, that, that was, that's the question is to consider removing the remainder of that pen number out of the district.
Is there much to approve or, uh, to set that public hearing on November fourth?
Um, I'm, I'm not calling something there. You're requesting to remove it from the single-family district?
From, from the Colley district altogether, because it, but based on what we found, it, it appears that it wasn't supposed to be in the district from the beginning. So, and it may get consistent with the remainder of the property, which is across the street here. And that, and it's all one, another one deed.
Basically half of.
Yeah.
Marshall went into one district and half of Marshall went into.
Left out. Well, it was left out and so, and there's indications. Well, it was left out, and so, and there's indications that it was supposed to be left out.
Other places in the county?
Uh, I don't know, we have too many that are, um, again, based on what we do with research, this, the, it would seem like the intent was to relieve the entirety of the property outside the district, and it doesn't appear that happened. Based on what we find out. So, that's the difference.
Is there a motion, uh, to set that planning hearing, or that public hearing on November fourth, six twenty-five?
So, Mike.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed?
Thank you very much.
Mr. Poston. Uh, next up, we have Ms. Henry with, uh, CDBG Neighborhood Revitalization Program, and we're just gonna keep going. He said he wasn't gonna speak for two hours, but we're testing him.
Not, not at one time, obviously, get it all at different, uh, now, oh, you can. This, this request is the second part to the, uh, to the application requirement that we hold two public hearings. The first one to talk about the program and what, um, and give folks opportunity to comment on whether or not, uh, a good idea to, to, uh, to go look at the, uh, grant opportunity. The second one that we're asking you to set on October twenty-first is where we will bring the actual request to the Board. Uh, the Board will have to approve the application. In, included into that application will be several policies and, um, uh, statements and guidelines that we have, we are required to follow, because it's, um, through HUD and through the state, they have all the rules that we have to follow. It'll fly, yeah, it's just about, uh, public participation plans and, uh, and, you know, we're gonna abide by the rules of the grant, and there, there's a lot of different things in there that we'll bring back to you, uh, for approval. Uh, but what we are looking at is, uh, requesting up to five million dollars to help, uh, uh, address the infrastructure, water, sewer, uh, roads that need to be constructed for the Webster Village project, for the portions that, uh, will, uh, serve our low to moderate income in line with the grant opportunities. And so, um, this comes at a good time, because, you know, we are trying to get this project, and Tiffany's working hard with the, with the, uh, with the group to get this project to the final stages of, of building. Uh, I think you've heard, um, much from Tiffany's updates about we've, um, both, uh, uh, Givenza Estates and Mountain Projects have received home funding, they've received a HUD two oh two grant. Um, the Commissioners are supporting, the county's supporting it with infrastructure dollars, so, um, this is, uh, a much-needed project and one that we think will benefit from these dollars, and we'd like to be able to bring that back to you on October twenty-first.
Is there any county match for that grant?
There is no required county match, but the fact that, um, we have a partnership and we have several funding sources, including what the county's already put in, we believe will make our application competitive.
Is there a motion to approve the public hearing for October twenty-first?
Certainly.
Second?
Say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you both. Now, we'll move on to resolutions supporting the, uh, funding of the Blue Ridge Parkway, and Ms. Henry.
Good afternoon. Hope y'all are well. Um, before you, um, you have this resolution supporting funding for repairs, strategic implementation of the Blue Ridge rising along the Blue Ridge Parkway. Um, I just kinda wanna give you a little bit of information to kind of tell you why this is in front of you. So, obviously, I'd like to start by highlighting how important the Blue Ridge Parkway is to Jackson County and our local economy. Visitor spending from the Parkway contributes sixty-one point six million each year to Jackson County's economy. The Parkway draws more than twenty million visitors annually and generates one point three billion in economic impact to their surrounding communities. It's a catalyst for tourism, which we know in our regional vitality, and supporting the local businesses and jobs. Jackson County doesn't just benefit from the Parkway being here, but we are helping lead regional collaboration as a gateway community. Um, we do have representation on the Blue Ridge Rising Ambassador Board, which unites gateway communities along the Parkway. The Board's goals are to strengthen relationships, encourage economic development, and build unified regional voice. Through this partnership of all of these communities, um, this regional plan was developed to include a lot of public input and some early funding. Their current objectives are, um, well, include a lot of different things, some of which are wayfinding signage, detour maps, and other efforts to guide visitors into nearby towns for the things that you would expect, food, lodging, gas, um, and et cetera, shopping. This resolution is important because it continues our shared commitment to the Parkway. The Blue Ridge Parkway Foundation has brought together nearly all gateway communities, asking for a proclamation of support only. There's no local funding that's being requested. Um, the action reaffirms Jackson County's dedication to tourism, our natural assets, and our regional growth. This is more than a roadway, it's about our connection, our community, and our shared prosperity. By adopting this resolution, Jackson County stands with our regional partners to keep the Parkway strong for our visitors, our residents, and our future. And so, I'm just asking for your adoption of this resolution, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions for Ms. Henry? If not, I'll seek a motion. So, Mr. Chair? And a second? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Hooper? Commissioner Broson?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Chairman Letson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Henry. Uh, moving on now to appointments. Um, first up this evening, we have the America Two Fifty Committee. Uh, we've gotten a lot of, uh, applications, and, um, I'll ask the Board for three at this time, if they have, uh, any nominations. Is this for the America Two Fifty Board?
We're gonna have five or seven, right?
We, we're gonna have nine total.
There's three vacancies.
There's three vacancies.
Already got five on there.
Okay.
Six. Yeah. I'd like to nominate, uh,
Already serving, and then in your packet, you should have several.
Beth Parris.
Okay.
I would nominate Beth Parris.
Beth Parris-James.
That's right, I'm gonna nominate, so.
Okay, is there a second for Beth?
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? That fills one spot, we have another.
I'd like to make a motion for Michael Moore.
Okay. Is there a second for Mr. Moore?
I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? And then, we have one last spot. I'd like to nominate, uh, Amelia Kolchewski.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? So, we have filled the America Two Fifty Board. Doesn't mean you can't volunteer, doesn't mean that you can't, uh, come out and support. I'm sure they're gonna put together one for the program. Next up, we have the Southwest Board, uh, Southwest Community College Board Trustees. And I will get two applications.
And two slots.
And two slots. We have two applications, Frederick, Fred Patrick McGuire and Glenn Howard Ubertino. And then, uh, if we so choose, one of us can serve. I've been wanting to, uh, serve on this board. Had talks with Dr. Thomas, so if someone so chooses between the three of us.
I make a motion to appoint Chairman Letson and, uh, Mr., is it Fred McGuire?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? And that fills our SEC board up as well. With no further business, we do have a need to go into closed session this evening. Any questions from the press? Is there a motion to go into closed session?
So, move.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
None opposed?
Session, we did have a decision that was made. We'd like to congratulate Zeb Holland on becoming our new emergency services director. Thank you, thankful for all of the applicants that came in. I believe there were forty-four total. And we just want to thank everyone, everybody did a great job. But congratulations to Zeb on your new position. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So don't worry. Second.
All in favor? I'm opposed, we are adjourned.
No good.
This is a fun one. Let's call our work session to order. First up tonight, we have comprehensive parks and recreation plan. And Nate, Nate, I was gonna try and get your name right, Nate Halupka?
Halupka, yeah, that's, that's pretty close.
Nate, I'm gonna turn the floor over to you.
Sure, first of all, good evening, I'm Nate Halupka. I'm part of the McGill Associates team that's working on the county's comprehensive parks and recreation plan. My intent tonight is to give you all kind of an update, an overview, and a little bit of what we're seeing as trends emerging. And then certainly, we want to hear if you have any kind of additional questions or any input to share. So, the first thing up, if you don't mind going to the next slide, is one thing that we talk about with most departments is just that, that generally local governments are along kind of a spectrum, so to speak, to where on one side of the spectrum, local governments look at parks and recreation as an expense. Similar to what you would have with a police department or a fire department, where you put funds in and you get either facilities or services back. And certainly those are valuable, but you don't get much more than that. On the other side, you see parks and recreation from local governments viewed as an investment. So you certainly, you still get the, the investment, or you still get the facilities back. You still get programs that are, that are returns on the funds that you put in. But you also have additional benefits that come with that. And we're gonna go through those here in just a second. But most of the time, local governments are somewhere between those two spectrums, or, or two, those two points within the spectrum. If you don't mind going to the next slide, please. So what you're gonna see is that I will regularly refer to parks and recreation as an investment. And the reason for that is, and what I have up on the screen, is it's just a few different research applications that have shown that parks and recreation really does operate, in most cases, more like an investment. You certainly get those programs, you get the facilities. But there's research that shows that parks and recreation facilities and, and parkland positively impact property value somewhere between eight and twenty percent. The other thing that parks and recreation does is help build the local economy. Certainly y'all are aware of that with the strong outdoor recreation economy that you have. But research is backing that not only does it help, it helps attract businesses into an area. Somewhere around eighty-seven percent of new business owners or corporations that are looking for new locations point out that they're listening, they're looking for a high quality of life whenever they're looking at starting up businesses or expanding their businesses, and certainly parks and recreation factor into that. Another area, and this is one that's pretty commonly associated with parks and recreation, is visitor spending. You see this a lot through tourism studies that look at heads and beds impacts through, through special events, through people coming, through using your outdoor recreation. All of these things are parks and recreation driven that help build in your local economy. So whenever I go through, and I'm gonna talk through this presentation, you'll hear me occasionally say your investment level in parks and recreation is doing such and such. This is the research that we're kind of pointing towards whenever we look at that. I wanna pause for a second and see if there's any questions with that before we move on. Alright, okay, if you don't mind going to the next slide. So one of the things that I'm gonna go over the next few slides, and I want you to know that this is preliminary data, we're still, our, our team is still looking at this, but this is one of the key things that we're doing is looking what Jackson County currently offers in terms of parks and recreation and comparing you to some of comparably sized counties across North Carolina, as well as National Recreation and Parks Association metrics. So I'm gonna go through, I'm not gonna go through every piece that we've done some analysis on, but I am gonna hit some of the high points. The first thing up, and you're gonna see two things on the screen, the first one, we looked at how you rank in terms of your parkland. And now this is, you know, these are, this is parkland that your recreation department itself is operating. It's not, it's not factoring in municipal operating facilities, as well as we know that you have like the Nana Hala National Forest that has a lot of property that, that in some terms functions as a park. We're really looking at what Jackson County has. Now, in terms of this, your, your parkland, when you're rated against other comparably sized counties across, or other comparably sized communities across the country, your parkland is a little bit lower. You're, you're approaching kind of that lower quartile level, you're below the median level. But we also take in account the amount of parkland that you have and amount of recreational space that you have through the Nana Hala National Forest, and it, as well as in close proximity that you have to, to the National Park Service and stuff like that. So it, while it's ranking you, or comparing you to those other communities, or those other sizes across the county, or across the state, we're factoring in that. If you don't mind going back real quick, that, I wanna touch on the second piece of that. The, the other thing that we did is we're looking at your per capita spending, and we, again, we compared you to comparably sized counties across the state, your, your spending or your investing more into parks and recreation than other comparably sized counties across the state, which is a good thing. Whenever we look at you and compare you to other communities across the country, you're approaching that national median. So that, that's, that's pretty, that's a pretty good indicator that you have a, a pretty strong level of investment. We would be more worried if it was down and below that nat, lower quartile nationally. If you don't mind, you can go to the next slide if you want. So the other thing that we did is, we looked at all of your, I'm not gonna go through and, and spend a ton of time with this, but we also inventoried your recreation facilities and benchmarked you similar with those type of amenities. Just to go through this quickly, if you see red on the screen, it means that you're below benchmark. If you see green on the screen, which you're gonna see a lot of, it means you're within benchmark. And if you see a blue facility, it means that you're above benchmark. Now, but I want you to understand that these are benchmarks, they're not standards. So you're in no way failing if you have a red mark up there, you're in no way, you know, above and beyond and succeeding if you see a blue mark. It's just a good way for us to understand what you currently offer. If you don't mind going to the next screen? So the other thing that we're factoring in is, again, you see a good mix of green, you see a little bit of red here. But we are also, what I wanna pause for just a second and show you is, some of the areas where you're currently below benchmark, you're actually already planning or have planned facilities that are addressing some of those need areas. And, and we flagged a couple of those. That really shows that, and, and these were efforts that the county was already pursuing before this study. This is just showing you that you're already starting to track and move in directions that are helping you bring you up to benchmark, and it really is just showing good foresight on the part of your parks and rec department, and certainly the leadership in the county to have that and already start to address those areas. If you don't mind, you can go to the next slide. So this is one, again, continuing with the benchmarking. We also benchmark your number of trails or your miles of trails. This is looking at, within your, your parks, or your park system specifically, not taking into account, you know, all of the miles of trails that the Nana Hala National Forest and other places have. You are below the national quartile in this area. But this is similar to those recreation facilities where we show that we know that you're already planning in those areas, and we know that you have greenway development that's underway to try and, again, move you up forward. So this is just yet another case to where you're having the foresight to already start to address what could be possible deficiencies, should the public desire walking trails, which we're gonna see, they absolutely do. I, I wanna pause there for a second to see if there's any questions with that, and then we'll get into a little bit of the public input.
Yeah, I gotta, I gotta. On the walking trails, is that, you said that nationally?
Yeah, so the way that we're looking at it is, we're taking the, the miles of trails that you have within your park system, and then we look at similar sized counties population wise across the country. And there's, the National Recreation and Parks Association tells us, you know, what it would look like in typical communities across the country. And it, what we're doing here is ranking you amongst those other kind of competitors across the country. So you're slightly below them right now, but we know that you're actually in the effort of developing more trails in the future.
And you said you looked at like counties, you looked at counties that have mountains and areas like we've got, that's sort of hard to develop walk.
Yeah, so that, that's a good question. So the way that the NRPA, the National Recreation and Parks Association does it, it's looking purely at your population, it is not looking at the topography, it's not looking at the geographic location. So yeah, that is a very good point. And again, we do, so this is just the benchmarking piece. We certainly understand that you have miles and miles of natural surface trail. Plus, it's really difficult with some of the, some of the topographic challenges that you have being a mountainous community. That's not just with trails, but that's with flat spaces, with your multipurpose areas. This is just the piece where we're looking at how you rank in, in terms of benchmarking levels. Yep, alright, if there's no other questions, we can go on to the next slide. So this is, whenever we do your comprehensive plan, we've actually gone through and reviewed all of your park facilities. What you see up on the screen is, it's a little bit more subjective, but we work all around the southeast. We're looking at different things whenever we come out and assess your parks, we're looking at attractiveness, lighting, the condition of the facilities, basically how new or how old they are. The maintenance of them, support facilities like your restroom and your shelters and so on. And then accessibility in the terms of like ADA compliance. So whenever you see a lot of green up here, which you do, it's a really good indicator that, and I'll tell you, we get to see a lot of park systems. Your system is very well kept up, it's in very good shape. It also speaks to how well you have interdepartmental collaboration within the county. You should be proud of the park system that you have. I can tell you that there's a lot of times whenever we go evaluate park systems, that they're not in this good a shape. You do have one area, and we actually had to kind of split up one park. There's a, a portion of the Cashers Community Park, which is pretty old and outdated. We cannot give it the high marks that we could the rest of the system. But we're also, and we reflect this in the, the plan, that we, we understand that there's already planning efforts that have been undertaken to take a look at that particular piece of property and really bring it up to the standards that the rest of the park system has. But this is really just a hats off that we, we really think that you're doing a, a good job in not only developing, but maintaining your parks. Any questions with this?
How many other counties do you see that the most?
How many other counties do you see that the most?
Um, yeah, so how many other counties? Um I think our firm is probably done. Um somewhere between twenty and thirty comprehensive plans um a- around the southeast. I think um. I have five that I'm working on right now, uh spread between Tennessee, North Carolina, and Virginia.
Oh, no.
We see a fair amount.
I didn't finish the question, sorry. How how many other counties do you see that the highest cost of living area of the county has. Forest marks on their community parks?
Well, um.
And pays the most taxes.
So tha- that's a good question. Um I think every different community is different. Um and and I'll be honest, I've had a chance whenever we went to your facilities in Cashers. Um the recreation center right there is outstanding. Um and there is, I would say, as a system as a whole is very well kept up. There is times whenever things just need to be updated over time to time. Um I can't say that I really speak into, most local governments look at the entire. Uh jurisdiction, look at the entire county or city and wanna make sure that everybody is well s- um well purva- provided for. Um a- and certainly that's reflecting through what um Jackson County is trying to do. I think. There is a sentiment that there's a, there's a certain area of um the park within Cashers that is really not meeting that standard right now. And um that especially in areas whenever uh you have high income levels, um high. Uh value of properties that that uh the expectation is that they're gonna have a high quality of living. And certainly the parks, um i- if they don't reflect that, you're gonna hear about it.
So usually, it's the opposite, as much as you say.
Uh I I'd say usually it is across the board that everybody wants their parks well maintained. Um and that uh the most local governments want to try and avoid uh having. Discrepancies to where there's a certain part or a different part in the county that does not meet those standards. Yeah, yeah, we we noticed that there is a a park or a portion of a park that was. Not in line with everything else, but we also recognize that the county has already been working to try and make those improvements. Um yeah, if there's no other questions, if we don't mind, we'll go on to the next section. Yeah, so we we looked at your recreation programs, um and I'm not gonna go into uh enormous depth here for the sake of time. Uh what you're gonna see on the left side of the screen here, screen here is the types or program categories. This is really looking at the the breadth of programs that you have, whether it's adults or. Uh adult programs in different areas, uh fitness programs, general program areas. And what we're seeing is that you as a department and as a county are having an increase in the depth or the breadth of the type of programs that you're having. Which is, that's a healthy thing to see. Uh the other thing, which is on the right hand side here, is analyzing the number of program participants that you have in those categories. And again, we see that same trend to where the number of program participants are increasing. So you're seeing a department that is offering. More and more programs, but you're also seeing more and more participation going on. That's healthy. If we were seeing things. Flatlining or going into decline, that would be cause for concern, but that's just to say that um your programs uh appear to be moving in the right direction. Um do you mind going to the next slide, please? Alright, so there is a couple of things that we did wanna draw out. Uh one thing we have up here. Is whenever you see programs that are high level, but then they flatline, um that generally points towards um. One that there's not, that the demand hasn't gone away. Sometimes you're at carrying capacity with programs, and that's what we think we're seeing. Here with uh, you see it a little bit with basketball, but you also see it with soccer. You see long, long term, um high participation rates. And then it just stays there. Normally that means that you don't um, for you to be able to expand. You would need more facilities or more programming staff to get there. And we understand that you're a mountainous community, that there's not a whole lot of flatland out there. Quite honestly, that's what we think is going on with your soccer program. Um obviously gym space has been increasing. And then again, um yeah, that's fine, you can go ahead and bring that up. So this is just to bring it up, um that those multipurpose fields, you're, uh if you're gonna benchmark um. Across the country, you see eleven to twelve facilities would be normal, you're at five. Um we don't have to dwell on this. This is just to say that you're below. Benchmark, that that cap is probably related, not because of there not being more demand for the program, but because there's not. Uh more flatland for you to develop additional um multipurpose fields. If you don't mind, uh go to the next slide, please. Um so this is a look into your aquatics programs. Again, we see a lot of increasing trend lines here. We see this a little bit of a dip in swim classes, and this is just um um, we don't think that this is because of demand dip. Um we honestly think if you look at June, um kids are getting out of school. You're also opening up um the uh the pool at uh at Silva, you just, we think that this is likely a um. A short term trend, um rather than that there's not enough demand for swim classes. Certainly. Swim classes are very important and we think that that would go back up. The other thing to keep in mind is that whenever you're looking at any type of new facility and get bringing it online, like your indoor aquatic center. It takes a little time for programs to get up and going. Um so this is just something to continue to track and trend, but it looks like your aquatic facilities are generally trending in the right direction. Um if you don't mind, uh go to the next slide. Alright, so now we're gonna get at the meat of things, and I'm gonna hit the high points with this. Uh really, we had a a project webpage that helped advertise public input meetings. Uh it also helped advertise the community survey. We actually had two surveys that were going on. You had five different public input meetings that uh were taking place, and certainly we're happy to hear from you tonight if you have comments. Uh if you don't mind going to the next slide. So just uh taking a look at the five public input meetings, this was critical that we actually held these. In different locations around the county. We wanted to hear from different areas, different ages, different population groups. So these were spread out. We also had a way of tracking what the residents wanted versus with the visitors. In general, you saw a lot of kind of crossover between the residents wanted and visitors. And one of the biggest things that kind of these top ten are showing us is there's still a strong desire for kind of passive outdoor recreation. Um and uh yeah, a a little bit of adventure in there also. This is really reflective of the type of community. Um people are drawn to um Jackson County for, you know, gr- high quality outdoor recreation, so it's not um. It's not really surprising to see that that's really what's reflected in these public input meetings. If you don't mind going to the next slide? Uh we also did four public, uh I'm sorry, four focus group meetings. Um this is to meet with local like nonprofit leaders, with school systems. Um and and so on and so forth. One of, and these are ki- some of the key things, and I am gonna read these off because I want you to to take them to heart. One of the things that we heard for the focus group meetings is they, there really is a reflection that the county's doing well. Um that the county leadership is being very supportive or has been very supportive and continues to be supportive of um. Recreation in the county, and I want you to take that to heart. I don't hear that a lot whenever I'm working uh or whenever our team's working around the southeast. Um there's a lot of times whenever. Uh parks departments feel as though they a- and local leaders have to um really coax and convince their. Their local leaders that Parks and Recreation is important. What we heard through these focus group meetings is quite the opposite, that. Local leaders really do understand and have been investing in recreation and it's appreciated. Um we also heard that the, you know, the aquatics facility is that it's getting up and going and and continuing to grow into it. Uh there's a lack of uh lifeguards there. We heard that the uh the the county does partnerships very well. That trails and greenways are really important. Um the system is helping the local economy. And that that land avail- availability may be a major barrier. Um we also heard that the community is really proud of what they have. And and as we shown, you really do have a good system and the community is recognizing that, and it's also drawing people in. If you don't mind going to the next slide? And alright, so we, like we mentioned, we did two different uh surveys. One was a a statistically valid survey. Um what I wanna draw here is um, these are, what I have up on the screen are unmet needs. Both from programs and facilities. That doesn't mean that you're not doing a good job. Uh there's, there's other parts, and we'll go into this in the the study that showed that you, you're doing a good job. This is just saying, these are the needs that in the future need to be met. And what we see from both facilities and from programs. Is that some of the things that they're calling out are, again, in line with that outdoor recreation. Uh passive recreation, special events, we see uh environmental education pop up, we see outdoor play features. Outdoor public arts, uh community gardens. Again, there's passive type recreation things that need to be filled in. And on the programmatic side, um the community really wants to come together through special events. Again, we see. Nature program, water based recreation, as the community still continues to grow into the facilities. Um what we see down towards the lower part of this is more of those active recreation. Um so we're seeing, you know, sports fields, athletic games and stuff like that. It's not saying that there isn't demand for it. It's just saying. That programmatically and facility wise, those things are being met uh at a, at a higher level. Any questions with this with regard to the statistically valid survey?
Yeah, the eighteen thousand households, is that, who who's interviewed that?
Uh the, the eighteen thousand households, um we actually um contract out with a a firm that's based. Uh that does uh statistically valid surveys around the entire country. My understanding is that. They pull their data from census based households, and then they determine their uh their surveying methodology from that. If there's additional questions, I'd be happy to, I can find that out for you um a- a- as to the actual. Uh more in-depth uh methodology that they used.
So this was eighteen thousand people from all over Jackson County?
Eight, eighteen, so eighteen thousand households, they actually surveyed, uh it was in the ballpark of, if I remember right. Uh they surveyed between three and four hundred people, um because that was, uh that's in line to make sure that they're surveying. Um they they stratified to make sure that they're serving an equal proportion demographically within those households. Does that make sense? They're they're taking a a sample set out of the entire population base.
Okay, from all over the county, not just one area of the county?
That's correct. It's, it is, um it is demographically stratified. Um to pick up the demographic areas, and then if you go to the next slide, we actually did an open survey um. That understand, so anybody in the, in the county could actually take this particular survey. Uh and the intent is, uh we also had a question within there that helps us understand. Um people identified where within the county they live, so that we could see the nuanced differences between. You know, what's wanted in the the Cullowhee area versus the Cashers area and so on and so forth. And in the study, we'll go into this in a little bit more depth, but it helps us understand what those differences are. Um you can see, there there's generally a lot of shared interest in walking and open trails. Um there's some more uh demand in kind of the southern part of the county for more swimming facilities. You don't really. Um we also, that was some of the things that we heard during the public input. So we, we're taking, what we're gonna do is we're gonna take all of this input. Uh the focus groups, the public input meetings, the survey data, and pull that together as a, as an understanding of what the community at large wants. Uh any questions with this? Alright, if you don't mind, go to the next slide. Sure.
Why is Cullowhee with District Three requesting indoor tennis or indoor swimming pool?
I.
Where is that at?
Yeah, it it is. We we leave that in there and we open it up, and it may be a case to where it's programmatically. Uh I would not, uh we haven't gotten into in-depth recommendations, but I would tell you, it does not make sense. Um for you likely to have another indoor for uh aquatics facility right on top of the one that you just built. It may actually be a case to where maybe people don't know where it is or uh hasn't, um they don't use it as often. Uh you know, I, it would not be, i- it doesn't make sense for you to have uh duplicative. Um facilities right on top of each other.
Okay.
Yep, uh if you don't, uh if you don't mind, uh the next slide. So one of the things is, we asked uh about the current investment level. This is basically an indicator of funding. What I don't want you to do is take this as something is. Um that you're doing something wrong. Rather, it's an indicator, what you're seeing is at a, at about a. Point three, it's showing that the community is, um generally, you know, your your funding level is good and you're, you're growing slowly. You're seeing that their desired um in- investment level is a three point five, which is a little bit higher. And all the, all that we're taking this to mean is that there's a recognition. That there is still appetite to continue to grow Parks and Recreation across the county. Um we didn't get into what that dollar of uh amount would be. We're just trying to see, you know, is the faci- is the community. Would they prefer to kind of hit pause on developing recreation, or is there still appetite to continue to grow? And that's kind of what we're seeing. We're not seeing it to where you're at a level five, which is kind of trend setter to where you. Really need to put the the foot down and and invest at a higher pace or a higher rate. Uh we didn't see a whole lot of data that that really supported that. Um and then if you go on to, which I, what I believe is the last slide. Alright, so what I wanna do, like I said, um a- and we wanna hear from you after this, but these are some of the emerging themes that will likely. Uh uh eventually move into being recommendations. Is that there's a desire for more walkability, more trails and greenways. Like I said, you're already moving in that direction. Uh we did see kind of across the board some interest in more environmental education, uh and more event space. People are wanting to come together and they're also wanting to be connected with nature, it seems. Um some of your desired facilities are below benchmark. Um but again, and I mentioned this before, it looks like you're already developing. In those areas where you're below benchmark. Um we did hear, and this was, this came out through the uh focus group meetings, and I kind of mentioned this a little bit, that uh your part-time staff in some areas are impacting facility offerings. Um we heard this uh with the aquatics facility and the need for lifeguards, that it may or, i- it may be impacting how often your facilities are are able to be open. We heard, uh we believe that your, your system is generally in good shape. Um we believe that because of your topography, your, your flatland is constraining your impacts of how you're having to grow. Um that just comes within the mountains. You get all the benefits of living in the mountains, but you also have the development restrictions that come with that. And then that we also believe that there's a strong desire for continued development of the the recreation system. So those are kind of the broad trends that we see, and again, uh so this kind of brings us to the conclusion of the presentation, but I wanna stick around and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Questions on board? I mean, it's great information. We'll move forward.
Yep, so what we're, kind of the next steps where we're gonna be at is, uh if you have any questions that you. Um that come up, I want uh you to feel comfortable. Uh certainly Michael and his team can take those. Down and bring them to us, and we would be happy to respond to those. If you have specific input that you would uh. Like us to to think about and consider as we move into recommendations, this is really the time for that. Um that can be via email or just circulated through Michael. Um we will be moving into the kind of the, our team will be moving into the recreation uh recommendation writing phase, into the cost estimating phase. And into the action writing, uh action step writing phase here over the next month or two. Um we uh, we do anticipate uh very likely having a draft done before the end of the year. And um uh it's just been great to work with the community, and we're happy to see how much development. And effort y'all have already made into making Jackson County a really great place to live.
Hey, thank you for your presentation.
Yep, thank you, and uh again, uh if there's anything that you need, feel free to reach out. Otherwise, uh y'all have a good evening. Thank you.
Moving on down, uh we go to Owen Carson with our conservation plan.
Alright. This just advances normally, correct? Okay, sweet. I'm gonna test it. Alright, cool. Um well, good evening, y'all. Uh I know it's been a long night. I won't take up too much of your time. Um you may recognize me from February of this year, when I came up to tell you about what we were going to do. Uh kicking off the conservation plan project uh that um y'all so graciously funded along with other organizations. And now I'm here to um give you a briefing um ahead of the rollout of our final conservation plan. So um the intent today is to just uh give you uh some background, some process, some outcomes, and um. O- offer some space for questions from any of you, and then also to um request your blessing to uh be on the agenda for the twenty first. Uh so we can present the conservation plan in its uh final form to you and to the public who has supported it this whole way. So, um without further ado, uh quickly, like I said, we're gonna do uh background, process, outcomes, questions. Pretty simple. So, um to remind you, the purpose of this effort, um was to develop a conservation plan. Uh to assess the conservation priority for the community, generate recommendations, to ensure that the rural scenic and natural character. Of um the Southern District of Jackson County uh were conserved in the face of increasing development pressure. Um I could tell you and show you graphs and data and charts and all sorts of things, demonstrating how um unique and wonderful uh. The resources you have here are. uh, the resources you have here are, but I think I'd rather just show you. And so I'm gonna go through a couple of slides that kind of, um, demonstrate that rural scenic and natural character we're talking about. Um, so what is rural scenic and natural character? It's Judaculla Rock. It's, um, important indigenous, uh, sites, uh, spread across the county and the district. It is, uh, the niche farms that you find here. We heard a lot about, um, lack of land for sports facilities in the last presentation. There's also, uh, a lack of land for farming and so the farms around here look a little bit different. We've got diversification with Christmas trees, um, we've got, um, farms with, uh, livestock and a lot of, a tradition of equestrian farming. Uh, we've got echoes of, um, Appalachian, uh, culture spread throughout the district. Um, and, and so, you know, this is kind of what the rural and scenic character look like. What else does it look like? Well, it's the rock outcroppings that we, uh, all know and love from a lot of the drives around here. It's the, um, thousand mile views that you get from Rhodes Big View. Um, it's these kind of dramatic, uh, changes in topography that, um, folks really love to enjoy. It's, uh, the waning purple light at sunset in the valleys. It's the sky island that we see up off the parkway in places or at high elevation when you get the, the mist coming in the valley and kind of, um, covering it. And it's also, uh, these co- collectively shared resources like High Falls that you see here, where hundreds of people show up to watch the amazing release, um, of water from, uh, Thorpe Lake, uh, from the reservoir, uh, starting its journey, um, down the river. And so there are spectators and also boaters who join. So this is also what the rural scenic and natural character mean here in the district. It's our streams, our lakes, our rivers. It's the fish that they hold for anglers. It's the mussels they hold for, uh, people that are now taking on the, the newest form of recreation here, it's river snorkeling. Um, it's for people that just, uh, enjoy water sports or just like to sit by the lake and put their toes in the water. So, um, it's also the critters that make this place what it is. The salamanders, the viceroy butterflies, easily mistaken for a monarch. Um, it's the spotted salamanders that cross sixty-four outside of Linsum Valley on the first warm spring rain every year, without fail. Um, I go and monitor them. It's the, it's the bumblebees, it's the unique, uh, vine-boring, um, caterpillars. It's the iconic hellbinder salamanders. And it's our beautiful native Southern Appalachian brookchild. These things help comprise what is rural scenic and natural here. It's also things like our, um, kind of fraught history with the American chestnut, the blight it, it, uh, that was brought here and, um, its constant recurrence in our forests. It's the beautiful orchids, it's the wetlands. Um, it's all sorts of these pops of color that we find when we're walking outside or, or take us a second to notice. Um, this is what we are protecting here in Jackson County. This is what y'all are protecting. This, these things help make this place what it is. And, um, so to remind you, the purpose of this effort was to develop a plan to protect that in the face of increasing development pressure. And so, again, a little montage of what increasing development pressure looks like in the, through the lens of our natural resources. So, um, it looks like buried streams, sand, mud, silt, you name it, in our headwater streams. Um, it, it makes, it looks like unfishable streams. Uh, it looks like, um, wayward clearing and buffers. It looks like, uh, completely filled-in, um, stream wetland complexes. Uh, things move down slope here very quickly and we have interesting soil types, as, as a lot of you might know. Um, it is also the plethora of roads and culverts we have here, tons of them. Um, and the fa- failure of those. We have improper planning. As you look at that, uh, top middle picture, we've got, um, you know, uh, an in, an in-ground utility line right in front of culverts. We've got, uh, gravel wash from a blown-out culvert, sediment, sand, uh, really interesting, uh, precariously stacked culvert. So these are the types of situations that we see pressuring our natural resources. We also see things like riparian clearing. All of these are trout streams. All of them need, uh, vegetation to help those trout thrive, to sup- support that one-point-three-billion-dollar industry we have here. Um, all of these have been cleared and these are examples of, uh, vegetation being cleared and streams degrading. We also see insufficient resource protections, uh, things that should be in place that are, um, mandated by ordinance that maybe aren't. Um, things that are insufficiently put in place. We see s- poor stormwater management, um, in a place where we s- we see some of the highest rainfall annually at any other place in the southeast. We try to get it off of our, uh, built surfaces as in and into our natural environment as quick as we possibly can. Sometimes, as we know, at that culvert that leads into New Cachers Lake, there's problems with flooding when we try to get the water off so quick. So, um, it also looks like s- overzealous site prep. So, um, examples of, uh, sites that have been cleared for, um, home sites that have, uh, been, you know, completely denuded of vegetation, things leveled, uh, ridge tops cleared, trees limbed to the point of where they will probably become unhealthy and maybe die, uh, presenting a risk to, uh, people that, that are in, in the area. So, overzealous site prep is another part of, of development pressure. So all these things, um, are happening in the county. We went through slides looking at all these wonderful natural features here. I've shown you some of these development pressures and this is the message we're sending to people coming here. It says, "Here, peak moments come in every color." But the message, uh, might not square necessarily with the experience that someone coming here might have. And so this is the crux. This is the reason why, uh, y'all and other folks helped fund this, uh, planning effort. Um, it's, it's to plan for future development, protect the things that we care about and prosper by doing so. So, you know, we, we, we have some wonderful things here. As long as we, uh, create a good plan for them and protect the things that matter the most, that keep people coming here and keep sustaining us, then we will prosper from it. So, a little bit of intro there, just to kind of give you, um, to segue you in. The process that we've undergone over the last thirteen months, uh, we've met with a steering committee of eleven people, uh, once a month, if not a little bit more in the most recent, uh, weeks, to, um, steer us forward with a vision and goals. And while those vision and goals, the language or the order of the goals might have changed a little bit over the time, this has remained consistent throughout. Um, so our steering committee has really driven this vision and goals and, um, and we've taken that forward. And, and then we've taken that and our Equinox team has done a very deep dive. We've, we've dug into the data. We've looked at state, local, federal data, anything we can get our hands on. We've done a deep dive into past plans developed for Jackson County. Uh, we've reviewed, um, ordinances, uh, pertaining to natural resources and development. We have done case studies and I think there was a question earlier about like, did the case studies from the rec plan match the community size, match the topography? We made an effort to try and, and find case studies that matched both, both the population size of this area and also, um, examples across the United States where the population and also the topography match. And so, um, we're trying to, to keep like for like in, in those comparisons. Um, we've also conducted things like suitability analyses where we take, uh, certain data that's available, um, and we, uh, overlay it and create anal- and create a computer model that shows where areas would be more or less suitable for conservation efforts or for development efforts. And this is just, uh, a snippet of the map that you see here showing the, um, suitability for development. Uh, we also, um, took some time to look at threats to the natural resources here. And, um, as you all may know, North Carolina is second to Texas in farmland loss, uh, in the United States. And by twenty forty, we could be number one. So, um, there's some significant projected farmland losses. And, um, with our steering committee members and with what I'll tell you, uh, some, some of the stakeholder groups and the public we engaged with, farmland preservation is a, is a really important component of this plan. We considered it farming and agriculture as a natural resource and not separate from them. It's very important. Uh, I think more, more communities should probably be doing that because, um, when those communities work together, uh, there's, there's better outcomes and better benefits for all. So, the deep dive, developed a bunch of data to objectively tell what we have here. Um, now it's, uh, it was time for us to move into, uh, stakeholder engagement and public engagement. So, we, um, had thirty-six stakeholders, uh, six stakeholder sectors, um, ranging from things like development to conservation to, um, to, uh, outdoor recreation, to, um, I mean, you, you name it. We had, we had a, a lot of different representation in those, in those, uh, thirty-six people and six different groups met. Um, we engaged them twice over the process, both to, uh, get their initial input and then feedback on our draft plan. Um, we also, uh, had scoped one public meeting, but we realized quickly in working in this district, which is massive, and also has kind of a polarity, there's a north and a south end, you know, along the Tuckasee G. We realized that we weren't gonna have, we weren't gonna meet the needs of people and engage them well enough to just have one public meeting. So we went out of scope slightly, um, and split it into two. And so we had a public meeting in the north, in the Tuckasee G, uh, at East Laporte Park on a weekend during the day. And then we also ha- had a public meeting in Cachers on a weekend and the evening. So, um, I'm, I'm sorry, I mix, I mixed that up. We had a, uh, weekend daytime event at East Laporte Park. We had a weeknight event at Cachers. But, um, we had some really good turnout for those and, and we, uh, talked to the public, had some great discussions and brought that information into our planning process. We did drive people to take a public survey, which was one of the most, uh, critical ways we could solicit feedback from them. And, um, I'm gonna give you some, some snippets here. I'm not gonna go through all this data because it's gonna be in the final plan. But, um, we asked people, what do you like to do in the district? Where do you like to go? Like, how do you like to spend your time? And so we asked them about the top locations they visited. Do you like everything from driving country roads to, um, you know, ice climbing? You know, so we, we tried to run the gamut there. We asked them about what their conservation and development priorities were in the district. We asked them about threats that they perceived to the natural resources and to development. Um, we asked them about their opinion on the relationship between natural resources and development. And then we also polled them on their, uh, understanding of and, um, their, uh, support for, uh, ordinances that pertain to both conservation and development that are existing in the county. So, uh, again, we'll have some slide, we'll have plenty of information in the final plan, but I think some of these findings highlight some consistencies that we found. So ninety-six, nearly all, and nearly everybody said, "We support programs that protect land, water and habitats." Ninety-two percent, so again, almost cons- full consensus, uh, voted yes to support changes to county codes and ordinances that would strengthen protections for natural resources. Eighty-five percent of respondents agreed that future development should be guided towards or away from areas. Uh, and, and the plan will talk more about those areas. Um, and then seventy-two percent, which was still pretty strong consensus, uh, felt like it was important to support farmland. Um, and so supporting initiatives that would expand protections for farmland in the district. Um, so that was, that was, we had a lot of great conversations pertaining to farmland. I think one of the, the focus groups that I was a part of that was the most engaging and interesting where I learned the most was with the agricultural community. Um, I learned a, a ton about, um, farms and farming in Jackson County and, and Lisa Kelly was very helpful for, you know, engaging those folks. And so I, we appreciated that. Um, so, all of that, our thirteen steering committee member, uh, meetings, our, uh, deep dive into the inventory and assessment, our public engagement, uh, our public survey, is driving us towards outcomes. And so we're at a, at a point of a plan now, um, to where we have, uh, created a draft. We've sent y'all an executive summary. I hope you had a chance to look at it. If you didn't, that's fine, you still got time. Um, but, you know, we took all that information and distilled it. Uh, first, we identified the most consistent themes that we found throughout the plan, conservation priorities. There was talk, uh, primarily water was very important, protecting water, um, growth, uh, directing growth away from sensitive lands, preserving farmland and working forests. I think that was a really important theme that we found. A little bit of nuance is that, um, not every working land is a farm, but there are a lot of really important, um, working lands here that, um, that help create the culture and the heritage here that are important to protect. Um, connecting landscapes and communities, uh, we just saw in the last presentation, there was, uh, an objective request for more trails and greenways. That tracks with what we found in our study, uh, which is that people, um, were supportive of expanding trail systems, greenways, and connecting places, um, through open space or getting creative with connectivity. That was important. And then also promoting stewardship, outdoor economy and education. So those, those are so, uh, a bunch of things that, that came up a lot as conservation priorities. We also took some overarching, uh, best practices and a, and, and laid them out there for people, for, for kind of the three different groups we feel like could activate this plan the most. Um, for y'all, everybody in this room, county leaders and planners, uh, there's some best practices that we laid out for y'all there. Um, for developers and builders specifically, who are going to influence the landscape as, as it develops. And then also for private landowners who, who either own land and have built on it or might own raw land and be considering development, or, um, just own land and, uh, you know, be able to affect it, the natural resources on it. So we developed best practices, overarching best practices for those. Um, and then what we did was boil it down. And I think the culmination here, which you received in your executive summary, um, recommendations for you, the commissioners. Um, and, and these are things, uh, what are presented here and what are presented in the executive summary are higher level. And of course, in chapter five, you'll be able to dig in and find specific, um, recommendations that support these, that might point or direct towards a specific policy or, uh, an area that, um, would be good to explore for y'all as commissioners. But, um, promoting responsible development, protecting and enhancing farmland, establishing a stewardship council, um, strengthening and enforcing land use ordinances, investing in connectivity and outdoor recreation, and then implementing priority conservation acquisition projects. And so, um, just to go through those briefly, responsible development, you know, we, we dig into, uh, ways that y'all could look at your existing ordinances to, um, maybe prioritize things like site scale, stormwater management, um, trying to incentivize, uh, rather than regulate your way into better development practices. Um, for example, offered, offering expedited permitting for developers who commit to meeting a higher standard of development. Um, we also, uh, you know, had some great headway in protecting and enhancing farmland. Um, something that started out as a recommendation for this plan, which was to, uh, for y'all to initiate a cost of community services study. Have y'all ever heard of that before? I see some heads nodding, but for those of you who hadn't, a cost of communities services study essentially, um, assesses the, uh, the return on investment that a, a community makes in certain land uses. And so it essentially compares agriculture, conservation and the different types of development. And what it does is looks at it, um, how much services cost to provide, you know, for, from, from the community and then what's the return on those services? And so, um, that is, that foundational study is one that has helped a lot of other counties in North Carolina, at least twenty-five, um, better support their farmland preservation program because it just shows just how valuable the investment in agriculture is. It costs very little money to invest in agriculture. Um, it costs more money to invest in development. And so if we're talking about planning for the future and protecting things that matter so we can prosper, then, um, you know, it, it makes sense that, uh, supporting farmland preservation and, um, and using that study to do so, uh, would be beneficial for, for this county. And so that started as a recommendation and is actually, uh, working with, um, Foothills Regional Council, Alan Tony, who's operating a little bit outside of his, um, jurisdiction. He's generally in Polk, Rutherford, Cleveland County, but he has extensive experience authoring these types of plans for other counties, including Henderson most recently. He is, uh, his team is currently underway with that cost of community services study. So within one calendar year of August, you'll have a document in your possession that, uh, shows you, uh, just how much your return on investment is in these different land uses. Um, that'll be an important, uh, piece of information both for y'all, for the planning department and for other, other county departments. Um, the stewardship council, that's a, uh, model that is, um, being done in Transylvania County. It is a citizen advisory committee, uh, that is designed to, uh, understand, interpret and, um, make recommendations to the Board of Commissioners regarding environmental policies. And, um, what it does is it, it, it both engages, uh, a council to study things and provide you with information that you can make decisions on. But it also creates a forum for, uh, discussion with the different land managing agencies in Transylvania County. And Jackson is similar. It has a lot of public land, um, there's a lot of management happening on the public land and it benef- it might benefit y'all as commissioners, uh, to understand how that management is occurring and, and you could make a, potentially make efficiencies. And also use the information from those land managers to help make informed decisions on recreation and, and other aspects. So that council is pretty important. Um, and I think, you know, the other, the other, uh, recommendations, I could go, I could go through them more, but, um, really, you have the opportunity to look closely at your current code of ordinances. Um, and we're not suggesting that you make changes to them, but what we are recommending is that you look at the information that came back from this plan, that the community to- told us and that we're telling to y'all. The community is asking for, uh, strengthening and enforcement specifically of, of land use ordinances. And so I think that's an important point to make. Um, we have existing ordinances. We don't need to create new ones in many cases, but, um, there's ways that we could strengthen the ones that we do have. But the changing language or, um, adding staff, there, there's ways to address it and we talk about that in the, in the final plan. Um, but in- But investing in connectivity and outdoor recreation, y'all have done a great job in that. A lot of people on here have voted favorably for greenways and trails, public lands, and so your community appreciates that, and they want you to continue to do that. And priority conservation acquisition projects, they're, using our suitability analysis, we identified certain targeted land areas where conservation seems to make the most sense based on our parameters. We're not telling you to go out and buy these lands, but we are telling you that there are partners out there who are willing to work with you to help protect some of these important lands and keep this place looking and feeling and operating the way that it always has. And so, those priority conservation projects, we expand more in the document, but there are some definitely people ready and waiting to help y'all with priority conservation acquisitions. So, in summary, this plan is a community-driven roadmap for you. It helps you understand where your most valuable resources are. It recognizes that conservation is not an obstacle to growth. It's not. It's a prerequisite for long-term prosperity, safety, and quality of life. And so, by acting on these recommendations, y'all, developers and builders, private landowners, can work in concert to protect headwaters and farmland, reduce safety risks, strengthen your outdoor recreation economy, and most importantly, preserve the cultural and ecological heritage that you have here, which, you know, once it goes away, it's hard to get that back. And so, holding on to what you have is important, and this plan can be a tool for you guys to do that. The most important part that we think you should hear is that this plan is not, it doesn't require wholesale adoption. And so, we're not asking for you as a Board of Commissioners to adopt this plan as a whole. We recognize that aspects of all plans can live well beyond commissionerships. And so, rather than present you with something that you would all have to fight over and agree on, you know, in concert, we've presented this in a way that y'all can work with your planning department and work amongst yourselves to identify things that might be of interest to you or important to you that you can act on now. Maybe low-hanging fruit, things that would really help support your constituents who are asking for these things. And so, implementing even select recommendations can have a significant positive impact. And it can position y'all as a leader in Jackson County, both this district here, but also in Western North Carolina. As we've done this plan, there have been active conversations and questions coming to us from other communities, asking about what's going on? What is Jackson County doing? This is, we like this. We think Jackson County is getting ahead of the game. And so, it's telling us that you're leading here, and you're doing something that not many other communities are doing. And you have a chance to kind of shine the light brighter and help lead the way in Western North Carolina. So, finding balance between resource conservation and development, because as we talked about, plan for the future, protect what's most important to you, and we can all prosper. So, with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
What do we do to get the state on board?
State on board?
As far as following recommendations you just gave us.
Well, none of the recommendations we gave you would require you to go against, to go against any sort of state-issued policies. Is that what you're asking, or no?
More like policing, or...
No, what I'm talking about is with that DOT, I don't know if you've been down there to what we call Chrysler Curve.
Chrysler Curve.
And going towards stocks ledges before the county line.
Oh, yeah.
They have killed every fish in that stream. The DOT has destroyed that. Absolutely, it's, if you ever go down, you'll cry. You see what they've done to that. It's hard to tell people what they can do with their own land when the state's destroying the stream right in front of you.
Well, that's a great point. I mean, you could offer that, you could offer people to do better, you know? I mean, I know a lot of people might have that opinion, I mean, they might not want to be told what to do by the state, but in that situation, they know better, you know, than the state's doing. And so I think, you know, it's not, this plan isn't asking, it's actually, it might be more powerful to have your local commissioners telling people, hey, you know, this isn't the right way to do it, but we have a plan that can help guide you towards the right way of doing things. So, I mean...
I was gonna say, the state has changed some of the VAD for things that are actually in voluntary ag district, to where DOT will have to have hearings prior to, rather than after. And so, there are some strengthening on that side of it, which can help. But that's, you know, on the VAD, other voluntary ag district side of things.
Yeah, I'm just asking how we can get them to follow some guidelines that we want to help.
Yeah, we want to make sure that these products or these properties are protected. We're not seeing state and federal guidelines.
They're destroying ours, but anybody else...
Sure. Well, and there is, we've been working with some pro bono legal assistance, and there's still some question in the air that we're exploring as to stringency of local regulations. And in most cases, you are not allowed to be more strict than the state, than the state's minimum standards. But with watershed protection, there actually might be some wiggle room. So, what I'm getting at is, you could, the county can always be the strongest advocate for their waters. And so, if you see something happening to your waterways that is being done by the state, and it's a trout, let's say it's a trout water, because I'm pretty sure that's a troutless stream in that Chrysler Curve, the state regulates the trout buffer. And so, we know that the county can't enforce the trout buffer, but what you can do is advocate to the state and say, hey, here in Jackson County, we don't do things this way, you know? We treat our streams better, and we'd like for you to do the same. And I think that, so, that's DOT doing that, but there's also examples of trout streams being impacted all over the place. And I think that, you know, I don't think it's a risk for you to look like a tattletale if the important thing is to protect your resources. And so, if the trout water is important because of the billion-dollar fishing industry, but also because you love to fish, you know, then I think that you should be the strongest advocate, you know? The county should be the strongest advocate for their resources.
Where is this Chrysler Curve?
It's on sixty-four. It's a horrible turn, yeah.
No shock curve, right from county line.
They've built a tunnel three times this summer, and they've got separate, they'll pump the water into a, like a slow-flow kind of filtration thing that is behind silt fences, but silt fences are overflowing, so it's not really stopping any sediment loss, plus the constant, well, just the slough off. I mean, it's such a tight turn already, any buildup that they've done is just washed right into this.
Sure.
Two video of the stream coming down, downstream there.
Chocolate, yeah.
I mean, we see it even on the Tuck ACGs, there's a divide when we have a heavy rain, with a muddy side and a clear side.
The tributaries coming in on the dirty side, right. So, I mean, I guess to your point, I would say, document violations, you know, coming from a background where this is part of my job, you know, is when I see water quality violations, is to report them, I would say, you know, feel good about reporting water quality violations, and feel even better about, you know, if you don't like what the state is doing on those waters, let them know, because they're the ones that are regulating those actions. And so, you know, the trout buffer program, you know, there's variances, there's waivers, but, you know, documenting conditions like that, reporting them, that's one way that the county can show that they stand behind clean water. I don't know if I have a better answer for you, but I mean, you know, like, telling the story, telling it out loud. And it's, other questions?
Yeah, it's pretty well-known, too, and I talked to a couple DOT people the other day about it, because I was having a little meeting with them about some other things, and there's one of the things that brought up, it's just, I mean, they've been working on it for six months, and it's at forty percent, and the needle is not moving. It's regressing.
Oh, that's a good job.
As long as there was a saying on something.
You know why we're losing so much farmland is because these older people cannot afford to pay property tax, and they're forced to sell out. So, until the state makes some changes, what we've been pushing for is homestead or tax exemption, they're gonna, they're gonna continue to sell out and put developments in and everything else. So, I mean, there's, when it comes to the farmlands, there's, I mean, we can do conservation all day long, but when the property owners can't afford to pay the property tax...
Well, one of our recommendations is that the county strongly advocates for changes to the present use value program. Right now, there are limitations that prevent certain people from engaging in that program, which gives them a significant tax deduction on that farmland. It has to meet certain, depending on the type of agricultural use, it has to meet certain minimum acreage requirements, and there's a minimum income requirement. A lot of people can make the income requirement in terms of the products, it's not very much, it's about a thousand dollars a year, it's like less than a hundred bucks a month. But, the acreage requirement is where, maybe they've got some small, it's less than ten acres, and so, they can't, they're not allowed into that program. And so, we have recommendations in the plan for y'all to advocate for things like the homestead or tax, or for state-level changes to the PUV program, which would, which could offer a wider number of landowners tax breaks, you know, for agricultural land.
That's where you see the big impact, is the smaller, we don't have large tract farms.
No.
Little bit of acreages of people that are trying to raise chickens and salmon.
Sure.
And if you don't look at the farmlands, if you look at like the other areas where all the mountains are being torn up, Cachers and Glenville, not to throw off on Cachers, but how big houses are going up, I mean, when somebody's got a thirty-acre piece of property, or a hundred-acre piece of property, which is not heard of anymore in Glenville or Cachers, and you've got a neighbor that's got a billion, billion-dollar house, whatever, their property value is just gonna go out the roof. And there again, they can't afford to hold on to the piece of property.
When they're forced to sell, it only makes it worse.
That's right.
More houses.
The only reason, because it's just kind of a value, eleven of them, yellow mountain. Seventy acres, two thousand seventeen, one hundred and ten, now one point two five.
Yeah, that's a nice, that's a nice return on investment.
You know, and people do it because it's, they can go up somewhere else, and again, it's people who don't live here full-time.
Sure.
And when those people that live here can't afford to live, that's people who have worked for us.
Yeah. So, while this plan cannot solve certain conundrums that y'all have as a Board of Commissioners, it can offer many, well, in our opinion, it can offer significant gains in a lot of different areas. And so, we think that this plan is going to serve Jackson County well, and we hope that we'll take the time to read through it, read through the recommendations that we provided you. We're open to feedback from you, and we would love to be on the agenda on the twenty-first to present this, the final plan to the public and to y'all.
Sounds good to me. I think there's consensus for that.
Okay. Well, any other questions? Thanks, we really appreciate it.
Thanks for saying late.
Yep, absolutely.
Go get you some sleep now. Who's up next?
Next up, we got Morgan Kennedy from Green Energy Park. Good evening, Morgan.
Hey, guys. How are ya?
Exactly, this is my favorite place in the county, other than in Mike Poston's office.
Oh, yeah? Well...
Where you going, Mike? I mean, we get there...
They're like, I saw when I got home.
Just a moment away.
Okay, I appreciate your time. I gave, this is my first time doing a talk like this, I was at Western teaching sculpture for a long time, and I used the park as more and more universities do not engage in certain processes because of liability, all right? So, and I've, as an artist, I've been at facilities like Green Energy Park all over the world. And so, so I give a little overview, not knowing if you know all that, you obviously know, because you said, I have this, one of my favorite places. So, here's Green Energy Park, and we have this name, and we have this logo. What does the logo say? The logo has green fire with recycling. It's an old trash facility, it's an old dump, it's an old landfill. The landfill is no longer intaking, instead it's outtaking. This park has been around for about fifteen years, I believe, roughly about fifteen years. It is the only one in the world that is recapturing the methane, the off-casting, and preventing it from mitigating off-campus, or migrating off-campus, which most landfills now seem to be near bodies of water, which is an interesting idea. And so, there was issues with that. I come in as a sculptor in academia for twenty-five years, and I come into this facility, and I've always seen it as a place that has great potential, similar to some of the other facilities that are in the region, like Penlin, John C. Campbell, Arama, which are all regional arts and crafts facilities that really sustain our culture and sustain processes, arts and crafts that are never taught in schools, they're like post-schools. Our landfill is at about seventy percent, which from our daily monitor, Eric, who comes in, this is unheard of, he's convinced that maybe the mining across the way has also combined to a natural gas fissure, because no other landfill is maintaining this constant output, right? And so, because there's always this talk of how long this gas will go, right? And so, the last electric, Tim, came up, worked with you guys and with other folks to recapture this methane and to run it into the facility. It's, there are other facilities that run generators for power, but this is the only one that runs art-producing phenomena. So we have glass blowing in the past, rental, mainly with the main focus on small business incubation, meaning be able to support artists to be able to use the facilities as the maker's space, because they'll never be able to afford these kinds of facilities on their own. A lot of our artists that we have that are based there and have been there for a surplus of twelve years are internationally and nationally recognized, they've been on the Netflix glass shows. Robert's in Switzerland right now, and Cole, who's local, all these folks live here, Cole, who lives along the Tuck, is constantly going up to Courtney, Pilte, and all these big glass facilities. The other half that's always been part of the language was blacksmithing, metal arts, knife making, swords. These are the two main, I guess, aspects or languages that have been associated with the use of this gas, which is used for fire. I come in, and I'm concerned, because it's a landfill, I got my boss to do something really like scary, which was to test it for PFAS, which are forever chemicals, these are the new danger terms that we hear about, these forever chemicals don't break down, they last forever, they're super cancer causing, right? And so, here I have some folks that have been in front of a hole for fifteen years, are they gonna come out with cancer for working at this park for so long? These tests don't exist. Brand-new test came out in January, a German corporation doing atmospheric tests, we ran it, it's being destroyed at our temperatures. We're the only place in the country that has run this test. So, it's the cool, right? And because my bosses allowed me to take this risk, we did it, and it's great. Here's my class back in the day, it's, aside from the blacksmithing, we would also use the furnace to smelt bronze and aluminum. So it's a way of supporting local universities that don't have founders, right? And it's, in the past, has mainly been Western or Southwest Community College. We have two kilns, these are Anagama Japanese wood kilns, the big one there burns like five cords of wood that we get from the county. Universities come from all over, from Clemson, from Marion, Kataba Community College. So, we're this maker's space or supporter for the arts, for community colleges and colleges in the region, that has been the language, right? And for artists to make money. I think that the name has been a problem. The name has been something that, you see that green flame, when you see that name, you think energy, you think, I'm using this gas. And that is cool. We're the only place in the world that's doing this, the only one. However, really, front and center, what we're doing is making art, right? We're an art facility, we're in Deosboro, right? And so, I kind of pushed over the last year, I talked with my bosses, if you will, and because everyone that comes to the park, most of the folks that come, they were picking their bottles, and they just popped in. They're up on vacation, they never knew this was here, someone told them about it, and they come over, right? So, it's not on the map in any way possible, right? It's a very small tribe that knows about, right? And so... And so when the arts are going out in so many schools because of liability, and here's a county-run facility that's promoting the arts, right? Tax paying dollars, right? And not just promoting the arts, sustaining our culture, Appalachian arts, right? And that, and those, and those Appalachian arts are changing, this glass is now part of it, Spruce Pine is not only the home of the purest quartz in the world, it's also home to glass production for the glass quartz, right? Which is why it was heating up so fast. So I've come up with an idea of keeping some of that same logo, the logo's red, Jillsboro Creative Arts Center, creating art in community through sustainability. I wanna take, I wanna celebrate the fact that we're reusing gas, but I don't want it to be, uh, as front and center as sustaining our culture, right? We talked about earlier, right? Appalachian culture, I'm eleventh generation hillbilly, you can't in, Buck can in, Kennedy, McDonald, Stewart, boom, I'm from Virginia, right? And so South West Virginia, and so I wanna be able to celebrate those things, right? And so, and so we have this park, Green Energy Park, it's got a name, the road is there, the signs were made, maybe, so I've been playing around with the idea of that the campus, if we will, that whole area is a county facility, the campus is the Green Energy Park, and in that Green Energy Park campus is the dog, run the landfill, the walk trail, the, uh, recycling center, the animal shelter, and the DCA Center, right? By doing this, it would allow us to possibly look at maybe forming a nonprofit, a quasi hybrid nonprofit for the DCA C and still have staff being paid through the Jase, uh, the Green Energy Park. Why are we gonna go to a nonprofit? I don't know, it could be a way for us to get more funding so that you don't have to give us so much money, we can be self-sustaining in some ways, right? This is the idea. The park is focused on this environmental stewardship of the gas migration, is also focusing on this maker space aspect with rentals. I wanna really push educational offerings, I want the park to make money, I want the park to sustain itself, I want the park to be more like a nonprofit where it's covering its costs, right? And so, and not just that, how can we offer, this is the best part, people, they, they, they just had the John C Campbell weekend, everyone was out there this weekend, right? Can I include a class of John C Campbell? I cannot. How do we remain Appalachian as heck, right? How do we, how do we divide these classes, classes to our community that aren't running me two, three thousand dollars, instead they're a couple hundred dollars, right? Or less, right? Um, supporting K through community college, right? My kids will sign my kids, but we need some help, right? And so how do we support those programs? Western has a huge robust program, right? The community college doesn't, so we're doing a lot of programming with Southwest Community College, and I wanna start trying to work on the actual, uh, Jackson County, uh, public schools. Our community events programming, we've been doing a lot of it, it's great, uh, a lot has been pro bono. I wanna balance it between pro bono and supporting our in-house folks, our communities, our schools, our retirement homes, but also charging highlands, charging these other places that can afford to pay. So we're actually using it as resources, uh, I wanna continue to develop and enrich this a little bit more. Fin- financial, like, responsibility is key for me, right? I wanna come in there and make some money, so this is kind of a little blow up of like, how I wanna like really promote our mobile unit, expand it, but promote it to the outside folks, charge them, get money, cover our costs, but at the same time, be able to by doing that, provide a free pro bono thing to the K through community, uh, like schools that are, don't have the funds, right? Which is still supporting our community in a non-green background, does that make sense? And so, um, what else? Uh, so here's just some shots of the local classes we have, like this weekend, next weekend, for, we, we're at Western, Western for the first time is paying.
Good job.
Good job, woo! And so, uh, but again, it's through this paying system that we can then also support our artists, which is the small business incubation, but at the same time, like building up that line item, being able to then say, oh, hey, you know what, I'm gonna have Boys and Girls Club to come down from Cashers, right, where I live, or I'm gonna have these folks come over and, and we're gonna support these other groups that don't have, necessarily have the funds, and most of it's like the schools or at-risk groups, right? Um, we had the Youth Arts Festival, this was my first time experiencing this last weekend, um, it was good. I think that we, one of our big problems with events in the park is, cause I just call the whole campus the park, is, is, is parking, uh, parking is an issue. Um, so we're, uh, I'll talk a little bit about maybe some ideas for where we're gonna push this, I'd like to expand the, the kind of events that we do, scrutinize the hell out of them, and then come back and assess and make changes, right? Um, Helene was a year ago, and Helene, so when I come in, I'm in Dillsborough, Dillsborough lost the train, they lost their pottery market, you go to the pottery market in Silvett's, a hundred and seventy-five dollars for a booth, five dollars for you to get in, what's Appalachian about that, there's nothing Appalachian about that, right? This is pure money making, Jillsboro has lost energy, that's my town, so I go to the mayor, I go to Tim and Debbie, and I was like, hey, I wanna do this makers market every third Saturday, make it low cost, ten dollars, and what we first started, I think we were thirty dollars, and I provide beans and rice and free coffee to all my vendors, and then a lot of the public come in too, and they eat it too, it's just beans, I can buy, you know, and so it's been great, we just had our last market, and from this market, I've been getting people who are local trash people who are gonna be my educator. Say, fuck. Well, they're gonna make worse sustainability, cause I, some of these people are gonna be like teachers now, and they're from the region, do you know what I mean? Like they're folks that live, that grew up in Cane and Ford, right? And they, they got some stuff to teach, right? And so, but I didn't push that. So, uh, another thing that I meant to do is placemaking, the park was a, was an old scrap, several buildings put together, it, it's got a few lot of problems, cause it was never intended to be a, a facility for doing art. So I'm, I have spent the last year, like, um, going hillbilly on it and just like doing it myself, right? And we're modeling it and making it better, right? So we see that one logo, I'm painting, r- right now, we're painting the whole front of the building, so when you drive up in there, it's a sunshine in the mountains, it's boom, Jillsboro Creative Arts Center, hello, we're here. Then we start the campaign, working with owls and billboards, trying to promote this new identity, this new thing that we have for classes. I'm bringing methane, I'm bringing propane, because propane needs to be for certain processes for our equipment to expand our classes, right? And eventually that gas will run away, and just because we use that gas for certain things doesn't mean it, it's not at capacity. We're at capacity, right? We've had ceramic, uh, equipment and storage for fifteen years, it needs to get out. We need to stop waiting for a building to be built, instead we start using what we have to, to make it happen, right? And so, so this is where we're at now, we have the, we have the mural that we're working on right now, and I'm skinning the interior, insulating it, dealing with pop, pop, plumbing problems, bringing it up to OSHA standards, getting Tony over regularly and making sure that we are looking great. And applying permits and getting approved, so we are on the right track on all that, and, and, and they're all happy about it. Um, this is the new, uh, we're in the new classrooms that I made, this classroom's anthropomorphic, or multi, multifunctional, we can have ceramics, mold making, casting, uh, this lamp working going on, and we have this, this space to do it. Do I need more? Yes, but I'm not gonna get more until I prove, proof of pudding, right? So, uh, advertise, get things out, so we're putting like, you know, get our website up, get, get things in the twenty-first century, where you can sign up for a class, pay for the class online, versus calling up on a cell, calling up on your cellphone and doing credit card, no one wants to do that, right? So, I, these are the classes that I wanna bring, we have ceramics, I wanna build ceramics, we have metals, bronze, castle, fabrication class, I've, I've expanded to lamp working and stained glass. I wanna do folk life classes, I'm hillbilly, so for me, when Foxfire books came out, it was the first time I felt meaningful about being a, you know, Appalachian, and I'm right close to it, and I've done a bunch of projects with them when I was a professor at Western. So I wanna bring that soap making, basket fibers, Eastern band traditions, all kinds of things that really celebrate our culture, that aren't at a thousand, thousand plus accessibility, right? Our community wants this, if, if not, if they're not from our community, and they're new people, whether they're Oaxaca Lachins or Flora Lachins, or which I call like Mexican Lachins and Floridian Lachins, they're all coming to be part of a La- Appalachian for a reason, and they want to know these traditions, right? They wanna get exposure to it, and so we can be that unique space that happens. Um, again, promoting, we don't, we haven't done that in the past, we haven't sold ourselves, we're not a business, but no, we are a business, everything's a business, everything's a business, right? Even church and the congregation is a business, it's about getting those people together. So I'm gonna expand art ceramics, um, expand, get that aligned, get the folk life stuff going, soap making and, and, and fibers, et cetera. In August, what fell onto my lap was the Jackson County Arts Council, I, I, I was asked to take over, like, the state's, uh, funding for the county for the grassroots program, away from the Arts Council, for a bunch of reasons that I don't need to know about, right? And a lot of it had to do with they don't have enough matching funds, we have a budget that supersedes what they gave us, which is forty, right? That forty is divided in two, two groups, roughly like twenty and twenty, twenty goes to people who apply for grants, organizations in the county. In the past, that's primarily been Colley, Webster, and Silla. What about Whittier? About Cashers, just because rich people live in Cashers doesn't mean it's not poor people in Cashers that don't need art, they do, right? So I contacted the, the CEO of Boys and Girls Club, I contacted a bunch of churches, trying to get that, some people down on the south part of the county to apply, they have, to put together a really robust grant, and so we're reviewing them now. That other twenty, we will have to do programming in the county and then get some TDA funded to go support that, which is exciting, again, trying to create energy in our community in some of those ways, different ways these other folks have. So one of those, two of these ways that I'm thinking about right now, and there's a lar- larger picture, is like, um, again, trying to get Dillsborough back on the map and get, invest in the energy of that place, um, cause I think it's, 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 it's interlinks with, uh, the center, uh, Institute of the Carolina Glass Arts Festival, just class, all aspects of glass. Bringing in all these milk and glass blowing units, bringing in these collectors and buyers and artisans and other facilities, our competitors of NC Glass Center, Penland, Arama, bringing them in to our community free of charge, here's a booth, joining in with the local restaurants like Innovation Brewery to provide beer, we make glasses for that, coffee for the other folks who don't, and just try to really bring that town alive with that kind of a nineteen thousand plus TDA, five thousand dollar kind of investment in a end of March big event of its kind, so trying to create new things, new events, right? The other thing I wanna do is this thing called Arts Camp, which would be a way of, yeah, it's hard for you, schools to have curriculums, like you're thinking K through twelve, to like, hey, I'm gonna break my curriculum where I have twenty-five kids coming in every day for so many hours, and, and have them change to use the park. What I'm, what I'm advocating is maybe getting s- all these schools that are part of our, part of our county that my kids went to, right? And be able to bring in groups of them, like a group of twenty, it's called Art Camp, and they come in and they are not watching us make stuff. They're getting their hands dirty, just like you did when you were a kid, right? Picking up a hammer, picking up this thing with your parent, your grandparent, whatever, and making something. If, we have to expose the folks to the stuff, right? And so I, I've worked with, with the lawyers, making sure we have, we're complying with our safety, complying with our agreements and making sure that we have those protocols. But I think that there's a, a really interesting way that we could start in small batches, bringing twenty-five down on Tuesdays and Tuesdays from Blue Ridge, then going over to, then going over to Smokey and bringing twenty over on these, on these days, and, and rotating that, and going through a series of arts that are fire-based, but also this folk life based situation, right? So we're like looking at our, preserving our culture, which, I mean, there's no school that teaches it unless you go to Penland or John C Campbell, right? And so what's great about that, we, if, if we expand into ceramics, if we can get ceramics going, you will be on fire, right? A lot of the folks around here go all the way out to the Heritage Center in Swain County to do that, they have an outdated facility, I mean, if we brought one in, we would kill it. And there would be a big money making thing for the county. The big key is like, I really feel like we can do a bunch of pro bono stuff, and through that education, recoup our losses, recoup that, that money. And, and build it to a point where it becomes a little funny, I don't, meaning out of, out of control. If, if we did do a nonprofit, and I don't know if, if we do, but, uh, they're changing this name and thinking about the campus as this and that as the DCA, it, it leaves that option there, right? And there are other facilities in the state that have learned from the director of the grassroots program that are quasi-state and nonprofit organizations, right? Which would make your job easier in some ways, cause then your, your investment in us is less, right? The question is the control of it, not just over the rules, but then you make committees and boards and you just make sure that's kinda covered, covered in that way. And so, I, I mean, that's, that's my story, it, it's taken me a while to get to this point and wanting to make sure I don't slip on people's feet, um, that, that we'll switch it to this, you know, Jillsboro Creative Arts Center, and then make this big push for rebranding, you think once we push for the rebranding, will it, is it a fail safe? Will I, will I have problems, will everything fall into place? Mount Murphy's always there, you know? And so, but I think wh- what is different is that at least keep trying new things, we're gonna go in new places, and the, and the goal is to really, I mean, celebrate the fact that you guys have supported this thing for so long, and at the same time, you've always wanted, you've always have known it, it has the possibility, right? And I, I wanna be a part of that, so that's my story. Huh? There's a lot of potential, and I really, like, we're never gonna be John C Campbell, we're never gonna be Penland, we don't want to be. You know what I mean? But we, and, and then the, the push, when I was at Western with, with Allison Morrison Shetland, the provost at the time, was that we were gonna have that building on camp, on the campus of, of, of the park, right? And there we're gonna make this investment, and then sluggered off to Lynchburg, you know, and it all fell through, and, and the new provost is, is not on our agenda, because they're just dealing with the financial loss of, of COVID, and so I think the push has always been, we need to utilize it for our own, which is the Jackson County public school system.
Yeah.
Right? Our kids are, you know, it's like when they, when, when Foxfire happened, there was a guy coming up from UGA, coming up to the Great Gap School and going, what do you guys wanna learn? And they go, I wanna learn about my culture, I wanna learn about my, our traditions, right? And I, if you go to my office, I got them all, you know, and I think that's, that's the same reason why people come here, that move here, is that they, they, they wanna be, I wanna be Appalachian, I was like, I was always trying to get out of that. You know what I mean? Buchanan, Buck, they just find out how they pronounce their name, who's that wanting to go, you know? It's not, I, I, are you trying to say it's not like reflective of heritage? Uh, yeah, I, I, I'm there with you on that. I, yeah, well, that, you know, what's exciting is that, that sometimes Sarah Dippe is really exciting, like, working with Jillsboro, earning their trust, getting involved, I would like to figure out a way to activate Monty Park. The acquisition of this new parcel is gonna be super exciting, uh, getting involved in the Drexel facility, doing, doing an event out there, could happen in the following year with this fund, where we, we're trying to activate that in conjunction with the Qualla and the Cherokee Museum, um, this, uh, it, it all fits after a while, right? And the big thing is like I'm working on changing the culture, it's been a, a, a way, a, a certain way for so long, that, where I work, and not to say that's bad, but it's just, we're not different.
Change is different.
Change is tough for a lot of folks, you know?
And now you're moving towards a new plan, that's.
And we're gonna have, we're gonna have problems with it, I'd love for you guys to come out, and check it out, maybe come out and do a class, make, make a knife, make, make something? I mean, I, I'm pushing, I, I keep pushing Chad, and, and Chad to like, do, get all your employees that wanna make a knife, put five names in the hat, in the ball, and I'll dr- and I'll, I'll put all their names in a ball, and I'll draw five, and, and they can come make a knife. It's such a, it, it's such an interesting way to give back to those who are out there cutting grass from seven to seven all day, do you know what I mean? And it's simple, and it cost me two hundred dollars, nothing compared to what you just gave back to all those employees.
Experience that you're not gonna get anywhere else.
It's just reinvesting into our people, right? And so, anyway, that's about all, do you have any questions? Oh, yes.
Does the name change?
Yeah, let's come out.
I like the artwork, I like the, the, uh, uh, you know, keeping it as the Green Energy Park, because it does tap the dog park, the, the trail, the recycling center, the, even the, uh, the shelter, I, I, the park as a whole, I think, needs to remain, but I'm fine with Dillsborough.
The idea was a reason, like, we had talked about, like, you know, like Jackson County, green energy, creative arts, the, the green energy creative arts, right? It's a lot, it's good, you know, and then, and then it was like, okay, well, the light of the art is just called the park, but it's not a park, you know? But it is a park, you're like, I'm fifty-five and I'm playing, and some of the folks are twenty-one, they're playing, we, we're going in, we don't know when we're making it there, sometimes we do, right? And so my thoughts were that like, if we, if we keep on. And so, my thoughts were that like if we if we keep all the infrastructure, just tweak the signs a little bit.
Yeah.
The park is still, the park was always the landfill. It was, it precedes everything.
Right.
Right? And so the park is, is that, I don't have to change the name of the road, I can still refer to it as the park. And some employees can still be paid through the park and and wear that shirt. But the DC or the Gillsburg Creative Arts Center. Is looking to is is looking to focus on sustainability as community.
Right.
And and in our history, right?
I mean, yep.
And the mural's comment, it's gonna look just like that. With raised letters out of steel, it's gonna look really nice. So um, please come by, and so we got approval on that. And because that's what that's what I've been trying to do. I know that in the past, whatever. I'm not from the past, I'm from Western, so for me, and and I'm from Virginia, so for me, it's like, I I wanna just communicate with everyone, I want everyone to voice their opinion. Because I feel like that's the only way this all works, right? Is is through that relationship, so. We're making it out of steel? No. No, no. Well, I wanna get a laser cutter. And but that space is not, we don't have a space. And so, part of the plan is on that backside of that building, there was a there was like a weird biodiesel park. And I'm in the, so one of the things I've kind of done is like, instead of going to Maverick Buildings, I go to Renegade, which is like down the road from Maverick in Georgia. For steel buildings and they're cheaper, but they don't build it, they have a subcontractor for that, but I'm getting lower numbers. But I wanna do a like a a full lean-to out the back that's covered, right? And then another structure for the kilns. These are all for the kilns and stuff that's been in storage for fifteen years, let's get them out, right? Well, and then and then underneath that big um weird structure. Um, I I've just Ralph Morgan, I just made these like thirteen-foot-long Ralph Morgan-heavy white pine tables, I got six of them. And and that's where that's where that's gonna be our workspace when the weather's nice. The weather here is not cold.
Right.
I lived in Wisconsin, I tell you what it's cold is, like it's not, like we have really good weather here, like it rains a lot, but it's covered. And so, it may be that through uh, you know, my boss's influx of funds is that we'll deal. Instead of me putting a crap building there, I wanna jackhammer that existing pad in the back and actually do proper plumbing. We have no water coming in and going out properly, it's all through this makeshift system. Because the building was never meant to exit water and to bring water in, it was meant to put the trash there and the front-end loader would take it and put it from the mountain. So, some of the funds we'll we'll work on is like just redoing that infrastructure. Right? The best thing is going to have its own building, and I do wanna do a ceramic building, but. I need to get proof that you'll invest in that, right? Down the future, or get outside funding through partnership, do you know what I mean? And so, right now, if we can get what we can get going, then I feel like we can expand that.
Thanks so much, uh, Morgan. Uh, next we got Rob Hall uh from our extensive director.
Let's see, um. So yeah, I've sent y'all some stuff, yeah, it's up there virtually, but I I got a handout here. Um, I will be quick, as I normally am.
So, uh, good to be here, Terrible Commissioners. County Manager, County Administration.
Pardon? Oh, hi, I T. So yeah, I put this together, this is uh, just a trifold about our programs with the Jackson County Extension. So I'm Rob Hall, County Extension Director here in Jackson, also served over in uh Swain County. So, just briefly, um, I'll start there on the administration, the the second page. The um, since last November and last year, we've hired a Family Consumer Science Agent, which is the North Carolina A and T uh position. Cause we are uh both NC State Extension and also North Carolina A and T uh State Extension. So that's Shannon Royce, she's covering both counties as well. There's four of us that cover both counties. Myself, the Animal Agriculture Horticulture Agent, and then Shannon with Family Consumer Science. We also hired uh back in January, uh Rebecca Davis, uh 4H uh Youth Development Agent. So, great team, we're fully staffed, which has taken a while. But anyway, uh as far as uh programming that I've worked with. And this covers basically July twenty-four up until June thirty-first, uh twenty twenty-five. So we did a concentration for a few days in soil and water, you know, almost uh two hundred and fifty youth. That we uh have a station with extension, we worked with uh Heritage Christian Academy. We did some mates and study uh this past February. And then we worked closely with the um Jackson Summer Day Camp, it was twenty-five campers. And then we did some land ethics workshop, which is conservation, education, environmental education. Uh, the Leopold Education Project, we had uh six participants there. And as far as, we get a lot of calls, wildlife, forestry, that type of thing. And those usually number annually uh in the dozens, age fourteen with forest management. Also, uh quite a few with wildlife nuisance calls. A lot of people call with, you know, groundhogs or bears, bats. Different things, skunks and uh armadillos now, of course. So, then I always do a Veterans Day, um, November eleventh each year, I'll do that again this year. At Mark Watson Park, and then I do another one, I always give out free tree seedlings. With Arbor Day, and that's usually in late April, so. We also have worked uh with Farmland Preservation uh Board, um. And then with Southwest Community College, we've done Appalachian Farm School. Myself and the Horticulture Agent, uh Minda Dodgtry, has done some lecturing with those uh farmers to be. Um, and also people that are in farming that just need to do more with agribusiness, uh education. So Shannon Royce, she's done uh some programming, she really hit the ground running. Uh, first year of a new agent is a lot of training. So there on Family Consumer Science, Matter Balance, she had eight participants. She's heavily embedded with the Jackson County Senior Centers with Laura Rody. So uh doing Living Healthy with Chronic Disease, she had several participants. She's also working with the Silver Farmers Market. And then Exodus Produce comes in and she collects this in a uh, we call it donation station. And she does that twice a month, and then she's able to donate that food to the Panthers. Fourteen realeology, she worked uh with the 4H Agent on that, had sixty-eight participants. And then uh with the 4H Summer Camp Programs out at the Rix Center, so we all participate in that. Um, out at the uh Cullowhee Rix Center, so. The Animal Agriculture, so Kim Forden is our um. Livestock uh Agent, she works also with Jackson Swain, and she works closely with the Jackson-Macon Swain Cattlehouse Association. And they have about thirty-two members, and they do a lot of different educational programs. Uh, it can be pasture management, it can be animal husbandry, herd health. Uh, they've done a lot here uh in the last year on that. And then they did a Big Farm Tour down to Georgia where they had thirty-two people at town. Strong Youth Livestock Club here in Jackson County. Uh, fourteen members have been involved in that, have attended and shown at three local fairs, Swain County, Macon County. And also uh recently here, just last week in uh Haywood County. So the uh Livestock Club, sometimes the members age out, and then we have to rebuild. So uh she's working with those and one week, a lot of those youth livestock members uh. Are 4HAs, aged uh youth, and they have uh become trained in judging themselves, so. Strong group there, and then the Livestock Judging Team actually went down to Raleigh and some competition. So, 4H Youth Development. Uh, Rebecca Davis is our 4H Agent, she has three main clubs. And those, there's about four uh total youth involved in those clubs. And then seven members at large, once again, with the Shannon Royce, uh sixty-eight second graders. Across three schools for embryology, which was a big increase from last year. Two new schools were added, offered enrichment curriculum to three community uh partner-led camps. Which reached seventy-two, clear through five Jackson County youth. And she worked with um directly with six, ten schools in the county. And four HADAs, Republican, two private, so. She's got two volunteers, and then the, one of the stronger clubs in 4H is the Shooting Sports. And they sent three members of the Jackson County uh Shooting Sports to the National uh 4H in Nebraska. And they did really well there, so. So, she clubs outreach to Richmond, she has reached uh over five hundred and fifty youth. And six hundred total residents in Jackson County, so. She's also hit the ground running as a new agent. So then Minda Dodgtry, Minda's all over the place, she also covers Jackson Swain. She has a garden live series, uh she did a free pesticide pickup. She uh got, she does a lot of pesticides for uh private commercial applicators. Um, and then she trained uh fifty-three attendees. She's a landscape contractor, Macon, she worked in Macon, uh twenty attendees served there. And then she's also uh the pesticide applicators, uh X and B, credit recertification. She's doing that, and that's usually in the uh winter months when those guys have downtime. She did a tomato grafting committee with ten attendees, and then she was a speaker also at Appalachian Farm School that I didn't mention there. She works a lot with the backyard uh garden producers, uh she had fifty-one uh where she went on. Sites with those gardens, those homes to those homes. Uh, technical assistance, that could be disease, it could be soils, it could be um anything. And then she's had a a lot of correspondence, almost, you know, in a couple of hundred of those. She does a lot of soil sampling and interpretation of soil samples as well as plant tissue uh for diseases. And then she has served, uh she's done over, you know, four dozen farm visits. And then outreach with commercial producers like the William Sheltons in the county. She's done twenty-seven pleased-to-face technical systems. She works closely with the Cr- Jackson County Christmas Tree Association. And they have meetings, a monthly in caches, and she does a lot of work with them. Uh, not just plant disease, uh for example, for top of root rot, that she does a help with them with marketing. All the agents, you'll see articles in the newspaper, radio, and also our monthly uh. Some quarterly newsletters, and then also on the website and uh social media, so. Frida Childers, the administrative assistant, she's kind of the glue that keeps us together. She designs brochures, uh and her flyers, she updates the website and the Facebooks, she creates post newsletters. And uh news articles, and then also keeps her site current. And she uh, we have a public space there, the kitchen conference room, and also a library, and she schedules those. Uh, for public and staff use. And is a frontline employee there reading the public. So the last page, last November, almost a year ago, we had a, we talked, y'all talked about this just recently with the laws of farmland. Um, we're trying to get those people up to speed, uh how to. You know, what's their planning farm succession? How do they get, you know, to the next uh generation of what they're gonna do? So these uh farms are um secured by family members and successively transferred on to the next generation. She had twelve persist uh participants with that. And then we also do some type of annual Farmer's Breakfast, we had thirty-eight uh farmers come to that. And that's uh, that's like back in January. So I'll stop there and this is for the highlights, this is not everything that we do on a daily basis. But like all the others, we encourage you to come see our programs, uh go on our website. And our website is, uh McCart is here, and be glad to take any questions.
Thanks for coming out.
Absolutely. Good to be here. I'm not as sad as y'all. But thank you very much. Always appreciate y'all's support. Thank you much.
Thank you.
Thank you. My lord, who, do you do this, darling?
Sorry, started yawning, but I hadn't slept.
So, so this is going back to our creating our service district. And we're gonna want to look at expanding, so in a hopeful manner, you can do. Services based on, you can do fire, rescue, ambulance. We wanna do all three, or do all of it in one file, creating one district. Um, which we talked to John a little bit about this, and we've got the or the resolution ready to go. That'd be the first part, and then of course you have to have a public meetings to establish the district. We've kind of separated out, and so you'll see here kind of the the impact, uh going from. Thirty-two down to what, twenty-five, I believe? Like that. And I can't look that. Twenty-five, twenty-five. So that would be the new, technically, based on. Looking at cashers, looking at all of the different, kind of putting them on the same scale, so we'll be paying the same amount of money. For the services and cashers out of this main, and then basically same as Cullowhee, the same as Qualla, same as Silla. So they'll get the same amount of money, and then looking at at your rescue squad and your ambulance services. To get what we're actually spending for public safety. And so that rate will be taken down, you know, roughly seven cents. And put us more comparable to like a Meacham County, and that's that's the difference, script, if you get, you know, we're near twenty-seven. They've got an eight-cent fire fire tax, so. Well, they're already paying, you know, they're paying Cullowhee, but but no, no, unfortunately, I mean, there's not like a payment in lieu of taxes scenario. For any state or federal institution. Um. A lot of people tried that. There was several bills throughout the last thirty years that would let states uh pay like a payment in lieu of tax for services. But it's never did, the General Assembly just never did pass it, cause it puts a burden on them.
So, I've had a couple of calls about this, worried that. People, departments are gonna lose funding and everything.
No, no, I met with chiefs last week, all the fire chiefs, and assured them that, you know, the the commitment is still. To provide what their what their needs are. But they also have to understand that, you know, like you have your Boston and your Savannah and Little Canva, that. You're not ever gonna have, probably have a need for a paid fire.
Right.
You know, cause you're gonna have, and the way I've sold it to them, to the all the chiefs, was the fact that you've got um. Now you're gonna have forty-five paid firemen by Jackson County, and those those people. Can be able to basically go anywhere in the county, because we're gonna create them like a master MOU agreement. And if there's a house fire in Boston, anybody, any of those firemen can go there.
And one thing that was brought up that, uh now that I remember, was that some of these folks are. They've got several years near retirement, that's like at Boston, is that gonna mess with their?
Unfortunately, it will, and and I've I've addressed that with them that, um, basically with any iteration that we. Once we do this, we we're not gonna have have coordinators that are paid by the county anymore. They're gonna be individual by the fire, we're gonna fund them. Cause the way it's been done is there's no supervisory, supervisory parts for the county, it's by the chief. And so, if they're doing something wrong, it'll be the county that ends up getting sued over. But we have no supervision whatsoever.
So these folks, is there anything that we can do in order for these folks not to lose?
No, what what I offered was that if they would get first priority on any other kind of job that dude wants to transition to. That we would, you know, try to see if we can transition them to another job. That we would, you know, try to see if we can transition them to another job within the county.
How many, would that be affecting? Four?
Well, it's affecting four, but only one, I think, that we. But there's not really much, you know, there's not really, nothing to offer them a position elsewhere, or maybe even a paid position on another part of it. And I don't leave the criteria on the other ones, uh what do they offer, retirement? So here we go into that, but they can also transfer their investment uh through the state into the 401K. Um I don't know if if they would ever qualify that, that would be a state requirement or regulation as far as. In a local retirement system, if they could quantify that time at that fire department or based on public service. But that's not, nothing to do with the county, that's to do with the retirement system. Yeah, so so they may can do that, but like I said, it gets into that that gray area, but right now, I can tell you there's a liability. From the standpoint of the way we're doing it, you know, with them being a maintenance position, no supervision. Um so this will eliminate all of that, which is kind of been an issue.
Is there any way that we can fix it where they can just finish out their time? Or is it, they all have to be?
Well, it's probably by individual, so some of them aren't uh even vested, and they've been to five years. The one individual you're talking about, you know, has over twenty years.
Yeah, that's.
They, you can run it for a year, in like eight. I mean, there's different, everybody's in different circumstances.
Different qualifiers for different things.
I would just say, I mean, I know it's just one, but the one is, you know, you'd hate for them to lose everything that they've. Worked for, well, I wouldn't lose everything, but. Working towards thirty years, you know. But I mean, overall, it's a good, it's a good thing. So I mean, I guess we'd have the lowest tax rate in state, wouldn't we?
Well, we'd be on the same level of revenue as the rest of the county.
Rescue squad and we got any feedback from that?
You know, the rescue squad, we didn't, we're not engaging in these conversations because they're gonna get a site the same amount, which we're gonna kind of factor that in. You know, ambulance will be the same difference. So really their expectations are the same through the contract, that way they get you out every year. Um it would just be coming from this segment of the tax versus the general.
General file, yeah. I think we need to, you know, just get some feedback from the firemen themselves, just to make sure that they're. Fully understanding what we're trying to accomplish, not necessarily, you know, you hate to think that somebody from. Whittier that's a full-time fireman might have to go to cashers or Balsam have to go to Savannah, but.
Well, I mean, it would be on, they're they have all, they have MOUs already. Place individually, so if they're to structure fire, they're gonna come from anywhere.
Right, they're coming anyway.
But this is kind of solidifies where the money's coming from, and as the board and as a county. You know, we're looking at it from the standpoint, we're all Jackson County, right?
Yeah, we're all consolidating, right.
If you're paid by Jackson County, you should go through a form.
This this will affect homeowners insurance rates.
Right, yeah, the the biggest thing is trying to get it to, you know, down to hopefully five-four rating. Um you know, and that's about manpower and equipment. You'll hopefully save more.
Will um caster Sapphire Glen will see an increase in tax, in in insurance rates? Because now we're we're.
Yeah, they'll they'll still have their additional taxes. Uh we have, basically what we have to do is we have to show in the resolution. How we're separating those, what this, what the countywide tax is banned for, and then whatever enhancement funds catchers need. That's where that.
Additional one point, whatever, million.
Cause they're the only ones with like seven, you know, they have seven satellites and then one main. You know, if we're gonna pay one main for Holloway, that's what we'll pay for catcher. And or maybe one satellite, you see what I'm saying? But we have to kind of separate that out. But we wanna be as fair.
Yeah, just getting it equal.
Thirty-seven. What was it, thirty-seven? No, thirty-one, forty-seven, three, total.
Yeah, and cashers decrease, but the current one will decrease.
Say that again, Darlene.
Because we're we're only pulling out. For eleven paid firemen for cashers. To be the same as total. And that's gonna be overall.
Right, but the the total, the total tax rate is a quarter of set last, quarter of this, right here?
And I, you know, in the pay, I think we had it in the paper last week. I did give an interview and I basically said, that says today. You know, that's not saying that the departments may come in, budget's on the table, they will, the moon, you know, I don't know.
Money to water, you know, a little bit down at the end. The phone got it right, but they made it sound initially.
Right, yeah. Yeah, I I tried to test, we're not planning on a tax increase at all.
Have you looked at other counties? Uh I'm sure you have. The fire tax and seeing how we compare to other counties as far as, I guess it's hard to compare.
Services may not be the same and.
What do we, what was we gonna be at, seven? See, was that what it was?
Around around seven. That includes EMS also. And there's no statistics in North Carolina where they have already compiled that data, so you have to kind of call each county.
Something, yeah, seems like we might have been talking, I've been, me and John too. Something sticks in my mind about Macon County being like eight percent.
There are certain districts that are eight, so they're individualized. But a service tax, we can all go up to fifteen cent total. So that would be the max. Right, yeah, there's plenty of room for, I mean, if it's.
It ever gets to fifteen cent, I'll probably be dead and gone.
Anyway, thank y'all, sorry it went late, so.
Yeah, it's exactly right.
Did y'all have any more questions about that, or we're good with the resolution to start it?
Ah, I can't even get my eyes to focus on it.
No, y'all are not setting the rate at all. They were basically right now just establishing the district with the resolution. You are doing taxes July first. This this is projected, yeah.
With no other business, is there a motion to adjourn? Second, all in favor? None opposed?